Okay, welcome everyone. If everyone would take a seat, please. And if you're gonna stand out in the foyer, we'd ask you to please keep your voices down even in foyer because it carries in here, please. Out there? Martha? Boom. Anyway, all right, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. And we'll ask, could everyone rise for Pastor Jeff Chipwood with the Anchor Christian Church, please lead us in invocation. Let us pray. Dear God, we thank you for this day that you've given us another day of life. We thank you for the privilege of living in a nation, Lord, that's free. I pray that you will be with us as a nation, that we may seek you, that we may follow your ways. And Lord, we thank you for those that serve in this community, that give of their time to lead. And Lord, I pray that you'll give wisdom to the council members, grant them wisdom as they make decisions which impact the lives of others. Lord, let us always do what is right and good in your eyes. It's in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call, please.
Councilman McIntosh.
Here.
Councilwoman Martin.
Here.
Councilman Slacta. Mayor Nelson.
Here.
Councilman Simmons.
Here.
Councilman Gibson.
Here.
Councilman Longcarte. Here. All right, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Okay, listen, what we're gonna do at this time, we're going to, we have a group of young people that comes in here and is going to come see us. Come on in. You didn't knock. And Joanne, do you want them to come up here? Hi.
Good morning, how are you all doing?
Hello.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Hey, man.
Good morning.
Sup?
Good morning.
You guys get cookies and candy?
Hi.
Morning, everyone.
Hello. Good to see you.
How's camp?
Good morning.
Hello.
Cool.
So, we're gonna do a group picture? We're doing a picture? Do you want us all to line up there? Could everyone, all the council people, could you come up here? Steven, come up. Everybody line up.
You can take some of these kids up here with us.
I feel taller.
I know. And I've got heels on, too. You are, you're the guy, you're the man.
Come on, let's bring some of the kids up here, yeah, good idea. Sit up here. Back up there, put some in front of us here. We don't bite. Somebody's gonna bite.
Hello, honey, keep going.
Joanne, does somebody wanna introduce them and tell us what? Yeah, would you like to do that?
Yeah, you have to stand up.
Sure.
Would you like to do it? There you go.
I guess so.
There you go. Just right into it.
Okay, um, hello, this is the summer camp group, the Positive Youth Development Group with Catholic Charities of Benita Springs, Florida. And we are a summer camp for children ages six to 11 years old.
Okay. Hey. Yeah, I know. You need to kinda kneel down a little bit because you make me feel bad. No, I'm just teasing.
I'll take your picture.
You can pick up, yeah, you can.
All right.
Fun.
I love Benita.
Nice, now I'm gonna have to get a couple this way.
Of course, for the cell phones.
One more.
Hide behind a podium there, kids.
You guys on the television?
I'm sure they would be.
That's right, Joanne, we got all day.
One more.
Oh, wait, Molly, where's she going?
That's a wide angle.
Thank you. All right, thank you, thank you, kids. Thank you for coming. Everybody give my hand.
Thank you for having us.
It's all right.
I'm right there.
I'm right there.
I'm right there.
It's all right.
Oh, where?
What?
Oh, come on.
98.
Mayor, you have a fan over there.
Hey. How do you do?
Pretty picture of it, isn't it?
Yep.
Uh-oh. There you go.
Leah, have fun.
Bye-bye.
Bye. Have a good day.
Bye.
Nobody tucked in.
Where's my phone?
Yeah, exactly.
You're not having to take wallets.
Have a nice day.
See you guys later, I'm going now.
Ah.
Camp.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, now for a piece of good news, the sheriff's department has just let us know that if you're parked at the post office, you're gonna get towed. So, but you know, just kinda, or if you need to go to the restroom or something, you know, I'll give you an out there, you know. Or if you get a phone call that you need to take, now, look at all of them.
Thank you.
Plenty of time, plenty of time.
All right, public comment.
Well, Eric.
Public comment, please.
I don't think, I don't think everybody parks at the post office. I can see, I can see how that would be a problem. Okay, now, anyone parked at City Hall? No, I'm just kidding.
Audrey, thank you. I know, I just.
Wow, that was a lot of people. Let's see. Okay, everyone, could, go ahead and get your attention here a little bit, but we're gonna take care of a little business beforehand, we're gonna go to the, um...
How about consent agenda?
See, yeah, I was thinking about going to the consent agenda there, I don't think that's a controversial one there. We're gonna go take care of a little business here, previous to this, so that everybody can get back in, okay? Uh, council, let's skip over to the consent agenda, what we have, the request for rebranding and naming of the department, and a request for a special event permit.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull both of them for discussion, I know we're busy anyway, but I'd like to discuss both if possible.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. For those of you who don't know, haven't been here before, we have a department called Code Enforcement Department, and this, our department, that department does much more than code enforcement. They're our public face in most respects, and we're rebranding that department, and I'd like for our director of that department, Frank, to come up. Frank Cassidy, would you talk a little bit about what the branding objective is, please? Thank you.
Hi, good morning. Frank Cassidy, Director of Code Enforcement, maybe soon to be Neighborhood Services. This is really a philosophical and a, an opportunity, it's a philosophical approach to provide a different kind of a national model for code enforcement, and what I'm really doing here is trying to turn the pyramid over. Your department is called Code Enforcement, but as you stated, we do an awful lot more than code enforcement. We are truly a neighborhood resource department that deals with outreach, education, resources to the neighborhoods, and we are a problem-solving mechanism that is on the ground floor and in the grassroots of these neighborhoods to actually solve problems in neighborhoods. So what we're doing is we're trying to make sure that the community recognizes that we are a valuable resource versus the traditional straight-line kind of code enforcement, which is a very small part of what we do. We're still going to be doing that, of course, because that is one of our responsibilities, but this is an opportunity to create a model that I feel is valuable, for, as a nationwide aspect, to try to get the, and I've said it before, code enforcement is, needs to be a part of the communities, not apart from the communities, and unfortunately, the negative connotations make our job that much more difficult. So there's several aspects of what we're trying to do with this rebranding.
Okay.
All right.
Sufficient, her.
All right, any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, good, thank you very much.
Thank you, Frank.
What's your pleasure?
I'd like to move to approve item A, please.
Anyone wishing to speak on this matter and this matter alone, please come forward.
Well, thank you, Mayor.
You're quite welcome.
I went and wrote all this down. Neighborhood services, what a refreshing change from code enforcement. The reason for laws and codes is to help keep us safe from the actions of others. I hope this becomes what the city can do for you, rather than what the city can do to you. May God bless this effort, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak on this matter and this matter alone, please come forward. Seeing none, roll call, please. Seeing none, council, what's your pleasure?
May I make a quick comment?
Absolutely.
The, as I mentioned to you last time, council, the, this facility serves 90 children, it's not only about after-school projects, it's about making sure they have good values in their, in their lives. It's a project well worth supporting, is a public-private partnership that will do this city a lot of good, and I'd move to approve this motion.
There's a motion, is there a second? A motion and a second, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye.
Councilman Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Longcarte.
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh.
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin.
Aye.
Okay, I'm gonna give a little bit more time for people to get back in here after they've parked in Estero, maybe, or wherever. Not that that's far away or anything. Let's go to the public hearing, I think this is okay, Audrey, on number, item number 10, to hold a public hearing on this, I don't think this was a controversial one either, to hold a second of two public hearings to discuss the Benita Springs Community Development Block Grant, and that's yours, right, John?
Yes, it is, and at the first public hearing, as we indicated, staff again is recommending that we concentrate on using the CDBG funds for infrastructure projects, the only thing a little bit different this year is a recommendation that we do a joint public-private partnership with Pueblo Benito to help them expand their facility, again, it is still a bricks-and-mortar public infrastructure-type project, although it'll be operated by the nonprofit. The green sheet is a little, there was an inaccuracy, I indicated that it was in the Rosemary Park area, it's actually, their facility is up on Old 41, it serves as part of that community as well as other communities, but it is that facility off of Old 41 that we're talking about.
Okay, and, and like you explained last time, all these details will be straightened out in our budget.
We will be bringing forward at the Budget Workshop recommendations for use of the entire CDBG allocation for the current year, as well as some carryover dollars, that will include some Parks and Rec projects, some public work projects, as well as the Pueblo Benito project.
And this public hearing process is so that people who want specific, like to see us do specific things with the money, has the opportunity. And with that in mind, at this time, I'd actually ask anyone who would wish to speak to this matter, and the matter being before us is the Community Development Block Grant, please come forward. Seeing none, council, what's your pleasure?
May I make a quick comment?
Absolutely.
The, as I mentioned to you last time, council, the, this facility serves 90 children, it's not only about after-school projects, it's about making sure they have good values in their, in their lives. It's a project well worth supporting, is a public-private partnership that will do this city a lot of good, and I'd move to approve this motion.
There's a motion, is there a second? A motion and a second, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye.
Councilman Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh.
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much. Let's see, and Audrey, what do you think we go to the second reading on, let's see, we've got a couple of things here.
We could do Burkhardt if you want.
Um, let's see, let's go ahead and go back to the, let's go back to the public comment on, well, we'll do, we'll go ahead and pull this out of here and do the guaranteed maximum price, you prepared to do that right now?
We're ready.
Okay, let's do the guaranteed maximum price, before we take action of any kind, we will have public comment on that item, how about that, okay?
Very good, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor and council, today we are finally to the point where we're able to present a guaranteed maximum price on the proposed project downtown. This has been in the works, as you know, for a number of years, starting with what we needed to do in terms of getting together a revenue-sharing agreement with the county that provides for them to share in the cost of this one-half, including debt service, but up to $16 million. A guaranteed maximum price today that's presented to you is 18.6 million dollars, and I will explain the difference, the actual number is actually 15.6, and just to be clear, that's the number you should compare to the $16 million, okay? So, for those people who want to say this is over budget, that's incorrect, all right? The project that was originally addressed in our request for proposals was for a budget of $16 million, and that's what we're in agreement with the county on. So anything we spend above and beyond that is going to be on our dime only. Over time, and I won't be stealing all your thunder here, Matt, but over time, I just wanna make it real clear, that over time, this project has grown. It's grown in terms of scope, in terms of distance, we're adding the, the property north of Imperial, we've added undergrounding the utilities, this is like buying a $200,000 house, but wanting to add a pool and a, and a three-car garage. You're not gonna get that same product for $200,000. And so what we're looking at is a larger project that's been fully vetted before the community, but the number is 18 and a half million dollars. Now, I wanted to talk to you about the difference. What you're seeing is the guaranteed maximum price is 15.6, on top of that is engineering, which is about one and a half million, and also undergrounding the utilities, which is not through our contractor, and that's one and a half million. So, that's an additional 3 million, that's how you get to the 18.6, all right? So, I just wanna make it clear, the reason this price is higher is because the scope of the project is larger, all right? And it's the expanded scope that we've been talking about all along. There are options, you don't have to do these things. You can cut these things out and get it down, but I believe, honestly, we have one chance to do this right. The staff is standing in front of you today, making a recommendation that you proceed at 18.6. And I will let Matt Feeney, our Public Works Director, take it from there.
For the record, my name is Matt Feeney, Public Works Director for the city. Carl covered most of the fine points I was going to point out, but I'll reiterate, we're here today, we've had two, actually three, public workshops to review the design plans for this project, one in February, one at the end of March, and then one in mid-June. The, at the 60% review by City Council, the Wright Construction Team was directed to proceed and develop a guaranteed maximum price for the project, they have worked to a 90% planned phase and have developed that guaranteed maximum price. The recommended project is, as Carl had touched on, larger than the original project that was solicited for in our request for qualifications. Chief among the changes really are improvements north of the Imperial River Bridge, and improvements to the lateral streets such as Childers, Reynolds, and Dean Street that connect Phelps to Old 41. And those changes include underground, underground stormwater improvements, as well as above-ground on-street parking and streetscape improvements. Those changes did drive the price higher than the original budgeted amount, because it was a significant change in terms of size of project. The total project is estimated to be around $18.6 million, excluding land acquisition costs for the roundabout at Terry Street. We are looking at a construction price of $15.6 million, within that $15.6 million is about $700,000 in contingency funds. We believe that through direct material purchase, there may be some additional savings that the city can see and bring into the project that could then possibly be applied to bridge widening improvements. Currently, we have, in evaluating the size and scope of the project, are recommending to not move forward with widening the bridge, at least on paper, and then work within the confines of the project through value engineering savings, and savings through direct material purchase to see if we can reintroduce the funding availability for that project component, and try to accomplish it within the scope of the 18.6, if at all possible. We feel that this project does address the goals of creating an environment conducive for economic redevelopment, creating a pedestrian and vehicle-friendly environment conducive to a downtown, appropriate with council's direction of a destination. So, today, the recommendation is to accept the guaranteed maximum price, and that will then start the construction phase of the project.
Okay, very good. What we're gonna do is, we're gonna go to, let council talk to this issue a little bit, have some questions with the council, before we take any action at all, council, we will go to public comment, and then we'll allow council to go ahead and take action, okay?
And, Mr. Mayor, just so you're aware, Wright Construction is in the room to answer questions that you may have.
Okay, do they, they don't have a presentation at this time, they're just here to answer questions, okay. Council, let us know your thoughts. Anyone? Okay.
I mean, I'll jump in here, of course, I mean, Carl, just for example here, or so the folks, the benefit of the room, what is the city of Benita Springs' total annual budget, period?
Um, we're looking at proposing a budget for you at about $28 million this coming month.
So the difference here is we're like, we're almost talking 10% here, the add-ons here are 10% of our annual budget.
10% of the annual budget, yes, that's correct.
Okay. I mean, that's the premise I start from. We had an arrangement, we had an agreement at a certain price, and, you know, I guess in the law of contracts, there was an offer, there was an acceptance, this is a counteroffer, so, in my mind, we're back to square zero.
Okay, if I might, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, please.
Okay, again, we put out an RFP for specific things to occur, we mentioned certain things within the RFP that it would be nice to have, those were added in, but we never represented that we were gonna be able to get all of that for 16 million, you cannot continue to add components to the project and then expect for the price to be the same. So, there is an option, if you want to go down, then, you know, to $16 million, then of course, you can cut some of the components of this project, you have that opportunity.
And I think one of the components I'd like to look at for starters is drainage at 8.4 million, and get some more detail there. I mean, how many units, let, let, how many businesses are we talking are gonna get drainage for 8.4 million, and how many residents for 8.4 million? Who's gonna benefit from that?
Somebody from Wright Construction can, I, because I've heard you address that before on, on who is going to benefit from that, I think it's the entire area is going to benefit from that. Anyone from Wright Construction? Hi, there he is.
Yeah.
Weave your way through there.
Good morning, Andy Powell, Wright Construction. I don't know that I'm going to be able to answer that question specifically, it would be from our design consultants, but the area that was included was the entire downtown area from, if Jim can join me up here, I believe we were looking at, from generally the railroad tracks to the east, how far do you know the impact area?
For the record, my name is Jim Powell, I am the Project Manager for Wright Construction for the Preconstruction Services. The drainage system we're speaking about serves several purposes. One, it improves the drainage for the downtown area, and it does so on Old 41 Road, from Terry Street to the Imperial River, and from the Imperial River to Oak Creek, it goes from the railroad track, basically Front Street, over onto Phelps. So that whole area gets new drainage. Additionally, that drainage is designed to provide the city with credits that can be used for the developers. It's designed to percolate the stormwater as it comes in, and if I remember correctly, the engineers told us before that only in an extremely major rain event will water even flow out into the Imperial River or to Oak Creek, it will all percolate on-site, which when you're working with the Water Management District, that's gonna give you many credits that can be used to work with your developers in a much larger area than just the downtown, that area was defined in the RFP, so that those credits can be handled by the city to work with developers and help with on-site drainage requirements.
Yeah, and I, from my conversations with Rick Barber during these deliberations, he was, seemed fairly certain, and Matt, correctly, if I, if I go down a trail here that I'm not supposed to, but he indicated that it was going to do what we wanted to, which was incentivize the ability for people to go ahead and build in those areas, not just in the commercial areas, but in some of the outlying residential areas, to where they wouldn't have to put water retention in, is that correct?
Yes, sir. Jim actually explained the system fairly well, it covers 100% of your drainage needs for existing, as well as future development, from Front Street over to Phelps Street on those commercial blocks along Old 41. In addition, there's a, an additional amount of credit for nitrogen reduction because of the system utilizing exfiltration trenches that can then be applied to a larger footprint, and that footprint extends over to, I believe, Shriver Street, and then actually further north along the Old 41 Corridor, all the way up to the Rosemary. So should you get future development in those areas that is required to treat water, the city can address through a separate policy how to issue out those credits so the developers don't have to utilize property on those sites outside of the project, you know, improvement footprint area to handle stormwater, the idea being that it would foster future development.
And that's what's gonna allow people to do zero lot lines and, and be able to use their things for, properties for other things besides giant retention areas in the middle of a downtown area, right?
Yes, sir.
So it's an important concept, but anyway, go ahead, Pete, any other questions?
Well, I just, you know, I mean, 8.4 million, I mean, it's not a very big area that we're talking about there.
Sure, it's, it's, we've known all along that that's one of your greatest expenses when you go underground, there's a company that mirrors, it has a wonderful logo, it shows a dragon and a directional drill, when you, when you go underground, your expenses go up, it's, it's the nature of the business, so when we're laying 48-inch pipe, as we are in this project, along the Old 41 Corridor, it's a significant cost because of the size of the material, it's a significant cost because of the work.
Well, interestingly enough, I'm decently familiar with that business, my, my father-in-law had an enormous business like this up in... And if I remember correctly, the engineers told us before that only in an extremely major rain event will water even flow out into the Imperial River or to Oak Creek. It will all percolate on-site, which when you're working with the Water Management District, that's going to give you many credits that can be used to work with your developers in a much larger area than just the downtown. That area was defined in the RFP. So that those credits can be handled by the city to work with developers and help with on-site drainage requirements.
Yeah, and I, from my conversations with Rick Barber during these deliberations, he was, seemed fairly certain, and Matt, correctly, if I go down a trail here that I'm not supposed to, but he indicated that it was going to do what we wanted to, which was incentivize the ability for people to go ahead and build in those areas, not just in the commercial areas, but in some of the outlying residential areas to where they wouldn't have to put water retention in. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Jim actually explained the system fairly well. It covers one-hundred percent of your drainage needs for existing as well as future development from Front Street over to Feltz Street on those commercial blocks along Old Forty-One. In addition, there's an additional amount of credit for nitrogen reduction because of the system utilizing exfiltration trenches that can then be applied to a larger footprint. And that footprint extends over to, I believe, Shriver Street, and then actually further north along the Old Forty-One Corridor, all the way up to Rosemary. So should you get future development in those areas that is required to treat water, the city can address through a separate policy how to issue out those credits so that developers don't have to utilize property on those sites outside of the project, you know, improvement footprint area to handle stormwater. The idea being that it would foster future development.
And that's what's going to allow people to do zero lot lines and be able to use their things, properties for other things besides giant retention areas in the middle of a downtown area, right?
Yes, sir.
So it's an important concept. But anyway, go ahead, Pete, any other questions?
Well, I just, you know, I mean, eight point four million, I mean, it's not a very big area that we're talking about there.
Sure. It's, we've known all along that that's one of your greatest expenses. When you go underground, there's a company that mirrors, it has a wonderful logo. It shows a dragon and a directional drill. When you go underground, your expenses go up. It's the nature of the business. So when we're laying forty-eight inch pipe, as we are in this project, along the Old Forty-One Corridor, it's a significant cost because of the size of the material. It's a significant cost because of the work.
Well, interestingly enough, I'm decently familiar with that business.
You are.
My father-in-law had an enormous business like this up in Michigan, where they had to deal with frost, and they had to deal with rocks, and they had to deal with a lot of other things. Are we, what are we drilling into here that's, we drilling for gold?
We're not directionally drilling. We'll be digging in mostly a sand environment. You'll be dealing with a high-water table.
That eight million dollars, what does that include? Does that, does that, does that just include the ditch, the culverts, and the French drain around the thing? Or does that include the entire system over the top, the pervious paving over the top and everything else?
I'll let Wright Construction address that.
Yeah, because that's probably a significant part of that.
Okay, I cannot say what's included in the eight and a half million dollars because I did not compute the eight and a half million dollars. I can tell you that what is included is everything we've discussed. It is all of the underground pipe. It is also the structures that are needed. There are some conflict structures as we have to deal with the existing utilities out there with Benita Springs Utility Company. We have to deal with, as Matt mentioned, groundwater. In those areas, you're laying solid pipe because you can't percolate. And all of the pipe that percolates has a gravel around it. It's a French, it's a big French drain. And it has filter fabric around it, and it has rock all around it in order to provide that storage area to percolate that water out, which again brings, if I remember right, they were talking about something on the order of ten acres worth the credits that the city would have. So I can't speak to the eight and a half million dollars because I did not compute that number.
Well, and I have to interject something here, Peter. I mean, the, from the very beginning of this, the number-one thing that we had to do to downtown area in order to get people to actually be able to build down there was to take care of the water. If we don't do this, if we don't take care of the water, let's say we pull that out, don't do the project at all, nothing, do nothing, and leave it the way it is, because without that water project, no one can build down there and build on a fifty-by-one-hundred-and-twenty-foot lot and put a retention area and parking it. You can't do it. It doesn't work.
Yeah, I'm in agreement there for sure, but I think we have to look at that number. I think seeing how we're looking for an additional three million dollars or ten percent of our budget, I think we need to, I think we need to go through every facet of this to get to a number that we agreed upon and see what we can get for that number.
And you're talking about ten percent of our budget. How many, how many years will this be under construction?
For work one and a half to two years.
One and a half to two years.
And if I might, Ms. Mayor, I would point out that the line item in our GMP for the storm drains is one million, eight-hundred-and-ninety-nine-thousand-six-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars.
All right, that's just.
I don't know where the eight and a half came from.
Yeah, I have a feeling that's going to include everything that goes over the top of it as well. Bill?
I happen to have that in front of me. I can agree with that's the amount. So where's the, where's the other five or six million?
I'm thinking that's the entire structure. I mean, if you look at the underground, the actual underground part of it, it's probably a million-something dollars. But if you include the pervious paving, the parking over the top of it, I'm thinking that's the entire system.
Originally, we utilized CH Two-M Hill to develop a draft budget for this project. It was originally around the number of about twenty-two million dollars, if I recall correctly. And within those numbers, drainage, to the effect that the mayor's speaking, including pervious pavement, including some filter marshes and other things, was estimated at eight and a half million dollars. And that eight and a half million or eight point four million is shown over here in the screen sheet under the original budget. But currently, with the construction numbers that these folks have worked up and the way they've chosen to address drainage, which is probably in a more conventional manner as just drainage pipe, and we don't have filter marshes utilized in this project, that number is significantly less. But there are other components, including pervious pavers, that are part of the drainage system as well. But it is not, in the current accounting of things, an eight and a half million dollar number. It was just in the planning stages, that's what it looked like it could possibly be because we knew it was a significant component of the project.
Okay, and you, you're all quite familiar with the numbers. I mean, Matt, you don't see this as anything that is absorbent or anything like that?
For the scope of work?
The price, yeah, the scope of work.
No, sir.
You've been through it time and time? Yeah, okay. Anyway, Peter, go ahead.
You know, I mean, I guess we can, we can move on there. I just don't think that number is, you know, I think there's a lot of questions surrounding five or six million dollars here. So I guess I'll move on, but, you know, am I to understand too, we're in here, there's three hundred thousand dollars for PR and advertising? Can you guys delve into that and tell me what that's going to entail?
The three hundred thousand dollar budget in there is for Solon Associates. It is the public information, public input, public meetings, as well as attending every one of the progress meetings with the contractors so that they can keep the public informed, coordination of events, so that we make sure that we're not impacting events when they happen downtown. That is, generally speaking, in roadwork, you have a public information firm that is dealing directly with the public on a daily basis if need be. So that that firm was handling issues that may come up, complaints that may come up to make sure that they're getting handled, as well as, again, coordinating events throughout the year for this period of two years.
For three hundred thousand dollars?
That's fairly typical.
You serving prime rib in an open bar?
No, but it's, the public meetings that they have, the displays, it's all of that that goes along with that. It's door hangers, it's going out and informing people when things change, it's maintaining the website. There's a lot, a lot more to that than just the surface of public need.
Okay, let's go ahead and invite some more of the people to the party here. Bill?
Thank you, Ben. I've reviewed this completely, and I see the same numbers that you provided us with. But my question is, if we're layperson talking about this, we need to know where the other five million dollars is, if it's going to, what's the name of the firm?
What are you talking about?
Barbara Brundage.
Barbara, is that where the money's going to the, that firm to do this?
No, and Matt may be able, the five point seven, I guess that you're looking at from the original budget? Or, oh, okay, I'm sorry.
This is your, this is your document?
Okay, just so I want to make sure we're talking about the same thing. You're talking about the design. Just so, do you, do you understand?
I may not be understanding the question.
Okay, as it relates to the numbers we gave you?
Yes.
The amount for Agnoli Barbara and Brundage, which is the design fees ABB, which is showing an amount of three hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars, is the amount it takes to bring the design from ninety percent where we currently are to one hundred percent. Survey the project for construction, okay? And deal with shop drawings, submittals, plan changes, all of that kind of thing, okay? And I might point out a couple of things to you, if I may. We placed in your packet an Exhibit A. Now, this Exhibit A explains to you how we compared to the original thirteen million dollar budget that was published in the request for qualifications, okay? And it shows that we are, if we just built that portion of the project, that we are five point six percent under budget, okay? So the additional work you're talking about is listed separately. It's Old Forty-One Road, north of the Imperial River. It is all of the side streets that connect between Old Forty-One and Feltz, plus Kentucky Avenue, and some work behind the band shelf. It is also the widening of the bridge, okay? And then all the additional public and one-on-one meetings account for seven point two million dollars of that, if you'll look at that sheet. Which brings the total to the seventeen-six-fourty-eight that Carl mentioned earlier. When he decided to get it into budget to delete the Imperial River Bridge work at this time, that is where the fifteen point seven million dollars comes from. And I would also like to point out to you to remember that what you're asked to approve here is a guaranteed maximum price, okay? If we do not spend all of this money, and we have to account for it to the city, and we do not spend all of this money, it comes back into the city, either in the form of additional work, like the bridge being put back in, or it's cash that the city never spends, never gives to us.
So the contractor in this case is at risk, is at risk. If you run across something unusual, you're going to have to do it.
What it means is, within the confines of what we have here, we build what we're telling you we're going to build, and it will not cost you more than this amount of money. But should it cost less, that's your money to keep.
Thank you for that explanation. I have something else to.
Yeah, okay. Go ahead, Carl, interject on that, and I'll go back to Bill. Go ahead.
I know that the eight point four million dollar drainage number in the original budget is causing concern compared to the numbers the way they came in from the contractor. But remember, this original budget was put together two and a half years ago, and we had to work with the county with very specific projects. They had to be infrastructure projects. They had to be within a constrained area, and you had to be able to pay them back within a certain period of time. So we did not ask for additional things in this budget early on or even during the process because sixteen million was a difficult number to even get an agreement from the county on anyway. In fact, the staff, if you'll recall, at the county actually recommended denial of our agreement that we now have. The county commissioners chose to go ahead and approve this agreement. So this original budget was a long time ago, and what you're seeing here is even though the drainage project may have come in less than the eight point four million dollars, for example, those savings have allowed the underground, you know, not the underground of the utilities, but the expansion of the project in certain fashion to occur within a budget that makes some sense. So again, budget numbers versus actual, just like in real life, sometimes just aren't exactly right. And again, timing-wise, this was two and a half years ago when the budget was put together. The key is, overall, our agreement with the county says, up to sixteen million dollars, they're willing to pay half of, plus the debt service involved in the thirteen million that we actually borrowed. So, and we are allowed to move that money around. So for example, if we spent more in sidewalks and less than drainage, according to the agreement, that is all right for us to do, if that provides a project that's more in line with what the council was looking to do and what the community wants.
Okay, Bill?
My next question is, the one point one land, where is that land?
The, the land acquisition that is required for this project are the four corners at Old Forty-One and Terry for the roundabout at that location. Those four corners and any additional money that the fire department might want for property to put the roundabout at Pennsylvania and Old Forty-One. That's the land acquisition.
We chatted about that, Carl, we had a conversation. And what I want to know is, but are the roundabouts are out now?
The roundabouts are in. The roundabouts are in this project.
I thought I heard something that you're, we're not going to do the roundabouts, or?
We are doing a roundabout. That's part of this project, yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, anyone else? Anything? Yeah, Mike?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions on page nineteen, under site work. It says, we changed to value engineering on four different things. What exactly does value engineering mean? Did we go to cheaper product?
Okay, what value engineering generally means is, it is our best attempt to give you a product equal to the original specified product at a cheaper cost, okay? One example on this project would, under, say, the brick pavers, we can still do all of the brick pavers that were, are shown on the original drawings. But the architect picked some bricks that are clay bricks, and they come out of Georgia. So we can look at using concrete bricks that are, there are three manufacturers in the tri-county area here that can make them, and still look as beautiful as the original design and save significant money. Landscaping could be another place. Landscaping, where we not, we may not degrade the quality of the plantings, we might reduce the number of them, but still get the effect desired.
Okay, but it's not going to be cheaper product that's going to break down?
No, no, what, no, our goal is always to give to our clients the highest quality product that we possibly can. But in some cases, it's better to use a different high-quality product because it can be used at a less expensive cost.
Okay.
So we are not sacrificing quality anywhere.
On page twenty-one, under exclusions, obviously, we have the Imperial River Bridge. And then the FPL transformer screens, what would the screens be? Landscaping or fences?
Well, the plans showed a kind of a fence on the architect's drawings to go around these transformers. We literally cannot do that. It would be a nice effect to hide the transformers, but the power company has to be able to get the transformers. There's not that many of them. I'm sure we could cover it if they come up and come up with a way that is acceptable to the city and Florida Power and Light to screen these transformers in some way where they can still have an acceptable access to them.
Okay, so that wasn't cost-saving?
We're talking about seven of them, I think it is, seven, maybe eight of them. Off the top of my head, we're not talking a big number, maybe fifteen, sixteen thousand dollars worth of work, which we could well cover within this. But I didn't want somebody to think we included it on this point because we've not even cleared it with Florida Power and Light yet.
Okay. And then on page twenty-five, Exhibit A, there's some numbers missing. Usually, you know, if you have line items, it'd be nice to see what the actual numbers are for the Old Forty-One Road, Oak Creek to Imperial River, you know, the Feltz. You have a, more of a breakdown in just, instead of just seeing total construction for that segment.
Well, these were basically put together as one total number. We list the items so that you are aware of what is included in that total number.
Under original budget, it had the Imperial Bridge improvements, but not the widening because that was something that we asked for later. But then at the bottom, when we're deleting it, we're deleting two million. So is that both the improvements and the widening, or?
Yes, it is. Yes, it is. The two million is deleting all of the work on the Imperial River Bridge at this time, whether we wanted, and that's another, I'll go back to your other question for a moment about the value engineering. We currently have our engineer working on value engineering for this bridge. The original concept to do this, in order to mitigate some permitting cost, was to drive piling on the north and south side and span the area to expand the sidewalk to the bamboo property side, okay? And also do a little expansion on the west side by driving piling on it. When it came back in, the beam to do that came back in at least twice, if not more than twice, what we expected it to cost. So we're reevaluating that bridge as we speak to even get, to try to get this two million dollars that we might have to come up with, that we've agreed to work together. that we might have to come up with, that we've agreed to work together on as a team to try to bring that in without coming back to you for more funding, to try to bring it into the 15.7 number, which Carl and Matt both alluded to, and we've even mentioned in our documentation, that that's part of what we will be doing, to still give you a beautiful-looking bridge with the views of the river, but get the cost of it down by possibly going to a process with, that will take a little longer, a little bit more expensive permit, but save us more than the additional cost to do that in construction costs. That's value engineering, too.
Okay, and with approval of the gross maximum price, or guaranteed maximum price, can there still be alterations as far as sidewalk cuts for driveways for businesses, things like that?
Most certainly. Most certainly.
And that's not going to affect the price, or minimally, or...
No, it would be minimally affected, and that's one of the reasons there is a contingency fund.
Okay. Okay. Hey, anyone else this time? Uh, let's see if there's anybody, you got anything else before?
I'm good.
You're good? Okay, Pete, go ahead.
Yeah, I want to go back to that public relations for just a quick second. $320,000, I also have the distinct advantage or disadvantage of knowing public relations pretty well. $320,000, I just absolutely do not see what you're going to do down there for $320,000. I mean, once this vote happens, one way or another, the city is convinced, one way or another. The businesses, you've been through, you've been down there already. I don't think there's much more arm twisting, or, you know, placation that's going to have to happen down there. I think that's been done. Who are we, I mean, $320,000 in public relations? And then I'll just leave you with that, I totally disagree with that number. It's very high, it's an exorbitantly high number for the area we're talking about. There are people in Tallahassee, Lansing, Michigan, and Concord, New Hampshire, that are serving the citizens for a lot less than that, okay? For that number. So, I'm not sure what we're trying to do for $320,000 in our PR campaign down there. But I'll move along on that point. And so, with this, I see that we have a project superintendent for $239,000, an assistant superintendent for $195,000, project manager for $419,000, an assistant project manager for $164,000, a project engineer for $41,000, and a general superintendent for $157,000. Can you touch base on those costs for a moment?
In what respect, please?
Are they running the PR campaign?
No, they are not running the PR campaign.
Okay.
I've got to object to this. I mean, you know what? These people deserve some respect here, Pete.
Okay. So, let me just ask my question, then, with all those people that are involved, you're still going to charge mileage, cell phone, and for coffee and water for those folks while they do this project, on top of those numbers that I just read?
If it relates to the expense of this job, the answer to your question would be yes. If they work on this job, they're going to get charged, their time is going to get charged to the job. The expenses relative to this job will be a charge to the job. If we hold a meeting and have coffee and donuts available, and you all come, that's an expense to the job. Okay? We don't normally, we, as a company, buy our employees coffee. We don't charge it to jobs.
Let me take a different approach, then, Mayor, and I, believe me, I wasn't trying to be disrespectful. I object to the eight-point whatever for the drainage, and I have issue with the follow line items. Public relations, vehicle expenses, cell phone expenses, water and coffee, project scheduling, project collaboration service, progress reports, all of which are being charged for. Temporary dust control, I have a question on that. Signage, site furnishings for $50,000, road lighting for $823,000, I'd like some more explanation on that, please. Plantings for $741,000, storm drains, which you touched on, for 1.8, roads, roadway signaling for $171,000. I'll just present it that way.
Is that, that's the...
That's it.
Is that the whole budget?
That's...
Yeah, okay. I don't know what you can say about that, but I'm going to interject here as a contractor. Okay? It is, first of all, and having been involved with this for quite some time, that $15 million, $16 million number that we came up with, that was a piece of fiction. That was something that we had to collectively kind of guess at, you know, between Matt and everybody, what is this going to cost, what's that going to cost? The reason we set something up there was because the county wanted something. It is not unusual to see one of these tax increment schemes for downtown redevelopment CRAs with no, no, no cap on it. We're just going to, we've got these plans, and whatever it takes is going to take, and we're going to get done with it, because we know, when we open the ground up, we don't know what's going to be underneath there. That's the reality as a contractor. These people, when they go into that area, and they give you that maximum value on that thing, they are assuming all the risk. In other words, a lot of times when you contract with an owner, you say, okay, this doesn't include this, doesn't include that, doesn't include this, doesn't include that, and if, oh, we open the ground up, oh, there's rock there, it's your problem, it's not the contractor's problem. What they're doing is assuming the risk on this thing. I don't see anything unusual in this. Most of the, all, most if not all the numbers that we showed, that we said, okay, this is what we think, they've done that. There's no surprises in this. And then when you start listing things out that we're surprised, that there's $300,000 for communication with the public, you wait till you block that road off, and you wait till you tear up the street in front of their places, and make dust all over the place, and they can't get to their signs, somebody's got to talk to them, somebody's got to communicate with them. That's going to be the best $300,000 you ever spent, if we get past this part of the thing. I know all of you think, oh, my God, that's a big number, oh, you're paying people, yeah, we pay people. This is what it is, this is construction. This is a, I can't believe that this project's just costing $16 million. It's unbelievable that we can get this done. When we open the belly of Old Forty One, open on there, you're going to be like, oh, my gosh. You're going to be blown away, it's going to look like a bomb blew up down there. It really is. And people are going to be really unhappy, and you're going to need somebody really good to do some explaining about it. And these guys are going to be busy working, trying to get the job done, and you've got to hire somebody to do it. I'm 100% behind this project, I'm still 100% behind this project. There are no surprises in this budget that they presented. And for anyone, as a contractor, I have a lot of customers, too, that's, I say, I'm going to build you a boat lift, and then they say, well, you know, I want a dock, and I want a fish cleaning tape, I want this and that, and I'm like, okay, okay, okay. And then at the end of the day, they're going, wait a minute, wait a minute, this is higher than what you said. Well, yeah, you wanted a whole bunch of other stuff. So, yeah, it happens sometimes. People's expectations, sometimes, even when a project takes six months, eight months, a year to figure out, sometimes people forget. And I, you know what? Sometimes council forgets that this is what we had anticipated. So, I got to stick up for all this stuff, I got to. It's a great project. And we may disagree on some of the things, and you may be frightened by some numbers, not unusual. There's nothing unusual in here. And I got to stick with staff. Matt, if you see anything unusual in there, would you just say something?
Yes, sir.
Now, that's your classic rhetorical question there, isn't it? All right, council, anybody else want to say something?
Can I ask Matt a question a different way?
Yeah, I do.
Yeah, Steve, go ahead.
You know, for those of you who've been following this for quite a while, we do have differences of opinion on what's got to be done, and Councilman Gibson made a point several times, that we're looking at the future, not looking at the today. Well, we are looking at the future. This is, this is what's going to make this city great. This is one of the things that I've spoken about a number of times. We're going to be the center of ecotourism in this city at one point. Probably 10 years from now, people will be driving to this city, wanting to get in our water, the Astero Bay, the Imperial River, that's what's going to set us apart from the rest of the cities in this state. If we don't do something now to protect downtown, and it's a little unfair to say, well, how many residents and how many businesses serve? It serves thousands of people who are going to be coming downtown, because we have to make this a downtown where people are willing to put money into it. The government doesn't have the money to make this right. It's got to be private investment. Yeah, it's difficult, there are some things in this budget I'd like to have a little more information on, and if that's the issue, then, you know, I'll ask for a continuous to the next, the September 5th meeting. I think we're ready to go. But I don't want this to go down because of some specific pennies that we're worried about in a budget that's this important to this city.
All right. Anyone else? Yes, Mike?
Well, obviously, I've had issues with parts of the project, but by all means, I don't want to see the project not go through. I believe it is something we need for the downtown area. Timing is everything, you know, I really don't want to see it continued to September, because that's just going to push back everything. I mean, really, the only thing I see is, we're going to take a one and a half million dollar hit to the general fund with the funding options that we have here. You know, I know you've guys have looked at different ways of cutting down the project. We pulled the bridge out, we have ways of getting it back in there through, you know, other creative means, trying to get the price down and savings here and there. So, you know, it's more money than we thought, but, like you said, we've added more to it, so.
Okay. Well, council, if you don't have any objection, thank you very much. And we're going to go to public comment at this time, and then we'll see what council wants to do. And thank you, everyone, for staying queued up there. As far as...
Ah, yes, Alex Grant, former city councilman. Now, on this budget for this project, I still am of the belief that we ought to be as close to the budget as possible. Now, what's the important thing? The drainage, the utilities, the bridge work on the Imperial River, Oak Creek, those are the critical factors. That's what we've got to fund. Now, that's going to be the bulk of the money. What we can do, for instance, on the medians, instead of going first class, we could put the brick pavers in there, we can keep the vegetation in the median to the minimum, we can do, for instance, crosswalks like we have presently on each of these intersections that we already have three of. That way, we solve the pedestrian interface problem with the limited access to the roadway. Another thing is, we have to be concerned, you're talking with these fire engines, I was a former volunteer for a number of years here in Benita Springs, I know that the fire engine costs a half a million dollars. You run a fire truck along, trying to hit some trees, et cetera, it gives damage to that fire engine, puts it out of service for nearly a month, or something like that. You know, you've got to think of all these things. And, and, and you've got to be practical, got to use some common sense in here. And that, that's the important thing. Cut back the roundabout, for instance, on West Terry Street, that's the one that's going to be the big bugaboo. That could wind up costing a lot of money and coming back to haunt you. Safety programs and everything else. It's, it's, you know, you can put that on the back burner. Get the important stuff done, the drainage, the utilities, those are the important things. And, and then you have a chance to see what you've got left over to do, but that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Fred Forbes, I'm 100% behind this project. The only, here's a couple of things I would say for the future, it's too late for this. But all these changes that were made, were made long ago. There was no reason that that cost estimate couldn't have been updated at the 50 or 60% point. Then you would have had more time to discuss this and all that, rather than your now, if this is it, we're done. I think that it, I don't see why you have to delay this to September. I don't see why you can't delay it two weeks, put, take the budget, the costs, and put it in the original format, so that people can compare that. Secondly, look at the value engineering. Look at, for example, what Mr. Grant was saying, I think there is significant merit in pulling that median out of the road, leaving a three or four-foot-wide decorative paving area, which is where pedestrians can take refuge if they're jaywalking, or crosswalking, or whatever. That median will cost you money. I think that it's important that you get the bridge in the deal, the overhead utilities has got to be underground. I think the other thing that should be looked at is, look at the possibility, if you acquire some land and create retention ponds, would that cost less or more? I don't know. I just think that you could do a lot of looking between now and the next meeting. I'm for the project moving forward. I will only say this, there's another big, bigger projects coming up, Benita Beach Road, some of your other roads, and if this same thing would happen, we couldn't do these things, because you can't just keep doing this, 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 and this. There's so many, so many dollars in the well. I am for it, I think, but I think there's ways that the budget could be cut back. I do agree that you added things to the project, but you know what? Whenever you add, especially a whole section, you need to know generally about what's this going to cost, is it going to fit in the budget? Are all the fees solid as a rock? Or is there still fees to be adjusted because of some of these adds? So, that's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker. Hey, Martha.
Thank you, Mayor, good to be here. Good, refreshing discussion, oh, for the record, former councilwoman Martha Simons. I do, thank you, sir. I do want to mention one thing, and that is the underground utilities, because, you know, I harped on that while I sat in that seat, and it was two and a half years ago, because I was trying to get those trees on Front Street, you know, I keep wanting those trees on Front Street, and I was told, well, let's not put the trees in, because we're going to, maybe we can underground the utility, the electrical utilities there. Okay, so we didn't put the trees in. Put those trees in, whatever you do. Number two, we previously did a 30-acre project for the Feltz Avenue Baffle Box, that thing down there, that did take care of 30 acres, and I think we do get MPDES credits for that, so I don't think we can double, get double credits. So, you might want to look at that. It's very refreshing, as I said, to hear somebody talk about salaries. Our hard-working man over here, head of our Public Works, you know, we have a government light program here in Benita Springs, you hope. We want to keep it that way, and I think that's what you were speaking to when, Mayor, you know, I heard the comment that, you know, these CRA things never have caps on them, and then you hear about these very high sal, they seem high. I mean, in the private world, maybe not, but in the public sector, they seem high. We don't even pay our lawyer that much. So, people are tired of that kind of thing, you know? They're like, y'all are at the trough, like, please, thank you for having oversight on that, I really appreciate that. I think the most important thing that you need to do here is, yes, I think you need to do drainage. Look at a way, maybe, and tweet that. I know your city manager, our city manager, has been up and down the road on that, along with our Public Works people, you know, looking at the different parcels. This doesn't include land costs, hello, how much is that going to cost? Okay? You're not even talking about that. That's expensive. So, I think you need to really not go back to the drawing board, because we've all waited for this for a long time. But I would say, look, the least popular, get the public publications, or whatever, the communications thing out of there, because y'all aren't listening to that anyhow. You don't see any of your businesses from Old Forty One down here, because they think you're not listening to them. Okay, thank you very much. Sorry to say that. And so, if you just need that for pacification, I think we already do that in our sheriff's budget, okay? We pacify people that way. A bomb going off downtown for a year and a half? Your business is, this is supposed to be economic development? We are still not supporting the businesses downtown, they've been here, and now they're not feeling supported. Take out the most controversial part of this. I think the bridge is absolutely important. Councilwoman Martin has talked about that for years, wanting to have that beautified. I agree with that. Wide sidewalks, get those utilities underground now, but for what's controversial and decorative, I think you can do that later. You know, like, as one of the members of the public here said, put in pavers for now. Get to the other stuff. You want those wide sidewalks, you want those utilities underground. Thank you very much, Mayor. Good luck in your deliberations. Thank you for being a fiscal conservative.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
My name is Deborah McClellan.
My name is Deborah McLean, and I'm the publisher of The Banana Peel. And I can assure you, I'm extraordinarily effective for $600 a month, not $320,000 a year. Now, let's go on to this project. Please do the project. Please remove the medians. Please buy those empty lots and bring us another septic pond like we have on 41 where the Botanic Gardens were supposed to go. And let's talk about why we need to do this. And yes, it will be disruptive. And those that can't make it through the year and a half, they'll go. And those that can will stay. This has to be done, and it has to be done now. And I want that $320,000. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
How you doing? Ron Pure, Benita Springs Taxpayer Action Group. You know, I didn't get, I didn't know that I was going to be looking at two opportunities to talk about impact fees. I came here for another agenda item, and I'll be addressing that, I hope. But on this matter, as you may recall, TAG has advocated the addition of impact fees that would encumber developers to make a contribution, a donation forcibly, to the city to take care of water matters. That has, I don't think, ever been done by the council. No one in the council ever brought it up, and thus, we've been living without it for a long time. I'd suggest a real quick look and sit down with each other and put together an impact fee that would help with the impact that the developers have brought to the ebb and flow of water in our fair city for the past 20 or so years that I've observed. I think it would be reasonable because they are, in fact, responsible for most of the stuff that happens to our groundwater and our above-the-ground water and the flow of it in our city. I'd like to leave you with that note. And the bridge, I would say, is the aesthetic accoutrement number one in the downtown area ASAP. I remember what it looked much prettier than it does now. And what they put in, the highway department put in at the time, was an awful shame. And I look forward to something really, really nice going in there, as most of the people here will. Additionally, the 8 million, I wish it were already being absorbed by the development community. You folks have made it clear to us, many of us, that you think it's your job to promote and enhance the prospects of more development in the city. I assure you, there are many people here today who could live without one extra house being developed in this city from this day forward. Some would object to that, I'm sure. But you've got two factions in the city, and I hope you'll respect fully those people that want to slow down in the process. And who is kidding who to suggest ever that a developer is going to abandon the city of Benita Springs if we were to increase impact fees? And that, of course, holds true for the Fire District as well, which I've been on the warpath for the past few months about. Impact fees are important to the taxpayer at large. The more we collect from the developer to offset these costs that you are discussing here today, the less we, as individual taxpayers, will have to pick up the tab for the capital items that you guys work on so often. Thanks.
Nice segue there, Ron. Yes.
Good morning. For the record, Kathy McGrath. As most of you know, I have been a property owner almost 50 years and a 32-year-round resident here, and I am very much in favor of this, have been all along, and you have to go for it today. But the reason I'm speaking now is I want to pass on some comments that I heard last Saturday, and I'm not talking about star-spangled Benita. I'm talking about people who came to me, and they're so excited about this project. And they said they just can't wait for it. And I said to them, look, don't tell me, I'm just a volunteer here, when you have something to say, please, tell our elected officials. Because you know what happens? Any issue like this that's controversial, you know who gets up and speaks? All the naysayers. I call the silent majority, they sit back, and they say, oh, yeah, this is great, I'm in favor of it, but they don't step up and say anything. So, I encourage them. I hope some of them did. Because this is such a positive thing, I have no issues with anything. I know the right thing will be done. Move forward, approve it today, and let's make it happen. Thanks.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, Ben Herschinson. Who was it that said it's deja vu all over again? About 11, 12 years ago, I decided to build a home in southwest Florida, and I spent a couple of days driving from Sarasota to Naples, checked out on how many communities. And I finally decided on Benita Springs, a couple of reasons. One reason was, the real estate agent told me, Ben, he says, you know, he said, we have a great plan for the downtown area along the river. It's going to be absolutely fantastic. Now, where do I sign? I signed, I did not go into a gated community, I did that for a reason. I want to be able to go downtown. I'm used to that, now, from a small area in New England. And I like walking from my home to a restaurant, maybe to a nightclub, whatever I'm going to do. And I want to do this here in Benita Springs. I do not want to drive to Naples, and I don't want to keep on driving to Coconut Point, I like it, but I'd rather spend my money here. And when I decided to build my home, there was an initial price. And then I wanted a larger pool. Well, and I wanted to open up, I want to have French doors where there was just a small door. Well, I ended up, of course, with change orders. The price was quite a bit more than what I had originally planned for. How many here who have built homes ever signed an agreement and did not end up paying more? Of course you do. You do that when you buy a car. So, then what do we do? City did, and I have to commend the city on a tremendous job. I went to all of the workshops. I asked a lot of questions. I drove up to Sarasota several times to look at roundabouts. I said, wow, what a nice thing. Really, this is great. And to other cities as well. And what happens? You get public input in matter whether you're the head of an HOA, as I am, whether a dean of the college, the way I was, you always look for public input. But then again, you have to make the decision. That's what a representative of a formal government does. This city needs this project. We hire consultants. Why? Because as an individual, it's got a few years behind him, I know what I know. Far more importantly, I know what I don't know. And when that time comes, I hire a consultant, I see a physician, whoever it might be. With little knowledge I have, some people come to me occasionally for advice. Not very often, I have to admit. That being said, I hear the comments here, and I see the comments from others, and I'm wondering, when is this going to end? The questions, yes, some of the questions were valid. But why do you hire consultants? Why do we have a tremendous city staff to do what they did? From Community Development to Matt Feeney, the great job that the city manager and everybody else does here. I support this 100%, including the roundabouts, and including the medians, and including every aspect of this project. And I want to say to the city council, please, the time is now. Vote to do this just the way it is, no more changes, please. Otherwise, I may start looking again to move. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, sir. Anyone else this time, please come forward.
Good morning. Christine Ross, the president and CEO of the Benita Springs Area Chamber of Commerce. I want to echo what was just said. The staff of this city did an amazing job, and Carl, kudos to you for who you hired. And I want to congratulate Wright Construction. What an amazing professional job they did. And for to emphasize that it's a fixed cost, you don't need to look at the old budget anymore. That was a projection to get Lee County, almost three years ago, to partner with us. Please do not forget the mountain that we climbed just to get Lee County to partner with us on this project down here in the south part. So, let's move forward. Let's not question the salaries of folks who have many years of education. I don't know anything about project management, otherwise, I'd be happy to help out. They did the best job they could, providing us with what we asked for. I'm a taxpayer and a citizen here, too. Let's vote and move forward and get this project going, please.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time? Going, going, gone. Okay, counsel, any other discussion here? Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor, I think there were some legitimate questions came up today. I'd like to leave it in the hands of staff to answer those questions as they come about, but we do have a maximum amount. Doesn't mean it can't be lower, doesn't mean that the $300,000 can't be talked about afterwards. So, we're talking about the maximum today, not the specifics. I'd like to move that we push Item 6B forward with the guaranteed maximum price today.
And I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second to accept the guaranteed maximum price?
For approval.
Yeah.
And that would be to also enter into the amendment which was provided in the errata.
What she said.
So may.
Okay. All right, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Simmons?
No.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
No.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye. Two, three, four, motion passes. And let's see, we will go ahead, I'm going to clap for that, you don't have to.
I want to, too.
I'm going to clap for that.
I am, too.
And a little fist pump action there, bam.
Yeah.
All right, now, for the, what everybody's been not waiting for. Let's go ahead and go down to, since most of these, we're doing public comment kind of one at a time on this stuff, so really, until we get to the point where we're talking at the end about public comment in general, we will do these one at a time again. Audrey, we are to Item 9?
Thank you. This is a zoning ordinance of the city of Benita Springs, Florida, considering a request to amend a portion of the Burkhart Commercial Plan Development CPD as established in Lee County Zoning Resolution Number 96042, amending Parcell E and F to allow a senior housing facility on land located at 24080 South Tamiami Trail and 3440 and 3333 Renaissance Boulevard, Benita Springs, Florida, 34134, on 17.41 more or less acres, providing for an effective date. This is the second reading of the ordinance. I've reviewed the affidavit of publication, and it is legally sufficient. This went to the zoning board on June 16th, who approved going forward. This is the one known as the ship. I think that's the comment. Jackie, we'll give you a brief history. Let me just, before she starts, just explain the zoning ordinance a little bit. Two things that are different in here, normally, we have a staff report. We put in what's in the staff report as revised by the zoning board. The zoning board did allow a little discretion in going forward. In the ordinance, you will see boxes on Pages 3 and 4 of the zoning ordinance. This is important. Staff had made recommendations. My understanding is, if you follow through with those recommendations, they will withdraw from the zoning because of the property rights. I believe Amanda Barak is here, and she can address any of those, as to those property owners. The other thing that is a little bit different that you will see in this ordinance is the effective date. Normally, the due diligence is all done prior to everything being, or afterwards. In this situation, the owners also had a slight change. So, the closing, the ordinance effective date is only upon the closing, which needs to take place within 180 days. Hopefully, it'll be earlier, but it's a little bit different than the normal language that you see. So, I just wanted to point out those two legal issues. Otherwise, Jackie, if you wish to proceed?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I just want to double-check. I know the first public comment, we kind of did at each thing as it came up, but we did just skip the second public comment. I don't know if we need to have that, or if we can continue the way we've been going.
Well, I believe there are people here waiting to go ahead and talk on these other items, and we're going to talk at those particular moments for those items.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we're fine with.
On this one, only participants in the zoning record are permitted to talk on the zoning case.
You know, we all had this discussion, didn't we, at the beginning of the meeting? We're going to, we're going to wait, it's not going to take long, we'll get through this. It'll be okay. What we don't want to do is duplicate efforts, because you're going to have some people wearing out, some people, and we'll end up lowering it to two-minute time. I want you to have your four minutes, and I want you to talk, be able to tell us right before we do our decision, okay? We'll be all right. Go ahead.
All right. Good morning. For the record, Jacqueline Gensen with Community Development. I'm going to keep this presentation very short and sweet. I do have a PowerPoint, if you need it, only if you need it. But as Ms. Vance explained, this is an amendment to an existing CPD to add property in, so the entire commercial plan development was opened up for staff to review. Staff and the applicant are in agreement on almost everything in the document, except for there's just one item which pertains to uses. And the reason why staff wants to bring this to your attention is that these are uses that the city has identified as uses we really probably don't want on the US 41 corridor. Again, recognizing that this could impact and jeopardize this project that is not ever staff's intent, and we definitely want to see this project move forward. So, you do not have to agree with staff's recommendation to remove those uses. But just to understand, that's where staff was coming from, and that is my short and brief recap. If you have any questions, I am here, Mr. Kirby is here, we'd be happy to answer.
What, just tell us, spout it out. What is the use that you're, is it the mobile home dealers?
Mobile home dealers and vehicle equipment dealers groups 3 and 4. Ideally, I mean, or in reality, the two main parcels that are, that have those uses are already developed with buildings that are on them. It's highly unlikely that they would be bulldozed and replaced. But again, it's just those uses we definitely don't want to see. So, will they ever develop? Probably not, but just something we wanted to bring to your attention.
And Audrey, I'm just kind of pushing this forward a little bit, the reason that the applicant cares about this is because this applies to the entire development. They can't really bind the other development, is that their argument?
That's correct.
So, in other words, it would try to bind other people that they have no, they can't, they can't really do it. Right.
It's been subdivided and removed, but it was part of the initial zoning.
Got it.
And we do have that language in our code.
Okay. All right, good. Thank you. Listen, this time, the applicant, come up.
Good morning.
No, we don't do swearing in.
Good morning. For the record, I'm Wayne Arnold with Grady Minor, representing the application before you today. We have representatives of the United Group, who are the contract purchasers, Tim Haskins and Michael Usolini present. Rich Ivanovich is a land use attorney. I have our engineer from Grady Minor here, and we also have a transportation engineer, should you have questions. I, too, like Jackie, would probably keep this pretty brief. I think we had a well-vetted project at your zoning board hearing. I think that what we're representing is an amendment to the Burkhart Plan Development to add the parcel that we refer to as the ship. And I can show you on an aerial if it's going to help you, run through these briefly. That's the subject of the entirety of their application that's outlined in yellow. The Wilson Lighting Building and the Muska Building are located at the frontage of US 41, and then, of course, the ship. You can see at the top of the page where it says proposed CPD addition. That's the property that's been added to the Burkhart project. Our master plan identifies the two parcels that would be developed for the proposed senior housing project as Parcell E and F. Parcel F, where the Ship Restaurant is located, a portion of that will become an out parcel for a yet-to-be-determined commercial use, but those are uses that are outlined in the PD document, and limits us to 15,000 square feet of commercial space on that parcel. This is a representation of the proposed building for the senior housing project, and you can see we have, to our west, is a large FPNL corridor that's largely vegetated. We're proposing some limited parking and a dog walk in that area. The two buildings that are L-shaped, they're in yellow and a brown. The brown represents an area that could be built with penthouse units. These are otherwise three-story buildings over parking, so each of the residences would drive in and under their building and have secured parking. It's a little bit closer view of that, and you can see that the middle building is a central clubhouse facility with a pool and other recreational amenities. This senior housing comes with a package that makes it more of an assisted living styled project without the care component. It is senior housing, age 55 and over, restricted. We have a lot of other conditions that make this function similar to what you'd find in most other assisted living. And I think staff agrees with us that these conditions that they've asked us to impose, very similar to a project called Sandalwood Village, that was built by the same people down in Collier County, and the same requirements were held to that developer, and requires onsite people to facilitate these residents' needs and community transportation services and things of that nature.
Wayne, why don't you go right to the guts of the matter?
The guts of the matter is, we have a staff recommendation for approval. We obviously, and you had this discussion with Jackie, we don't support the removal of these couple of uses, and I'm glad staff is saying that they can live with keeping them in, because it's important to us, because if you make a motion to approve with staff, you're going to have Mr. Brooker, who represents one of the other property owners, stand up and tell them that they withdraw their authorization to allow us to amend the PPD document, which means the item fails, and the mobile home uses and the vehicle dealers will remain. So, we think it makes sense to approve this for the senior housing use that we think fits in the neighborhood and staff supports. So, hope you can support that.
Okay. All right. Any questions, counsel? No? I'm gonna go to the parties of record, okay? Is that right? And what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna name them off one at a time. Rick Steinmeier.
Okay. Can you put that one up, the picture you had up there with the, with the four buildings? Are the gray or the brownish areas on the two corners, are they, what are they and are they part of the density? They're not to be built at this point?
If I can respond to that. The areas that are outlined in the beige-brown color are part of the building. That's an optional four-story component to this building that would support a penthouse-style unit. And it's inclusive of the 160 units that we've requested.
Okay. All right. Okay, Rick, is that all? Good. And Mr., okay, we had Bernard Kramer. Are you here, Bernard Kramer? Hi, would you like, come on up. Good morning.
For the record, Bernard Kramer, a resident of Pelican Landing, where independent person coming here, and I was at the zoning meeting and had a couple comments to make regarding the line of sight of some of those buildings. And since that period of time, Mr. Haskins and I have had numerous discussions about bringing this forward to the people of the Long Lake area, where Mr. McIntosh is a resident, but will never be seen from this building at all. But there are a few people along that parkway that we wanted to make sure that they had an opportunity to see what was gonna happen, and because most of these people are on holiday right now, that we have worked out an arrangement where we will work and bring this presentation to the group of unit owners there. Again, I'm here independently. I don't represent anyone from the community, but because I had a concern at the meeting, he and I talked, and he said that let's work it out together.
Good. I'm glad they're gonna work with you.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Let's go to Rich Ivanovich. Rich, are you here?
He's on the applicant team.
I'm gonna wave right now.
Hey. Okay. I'm gonna put a note there. Rich waved. Okay, Mr. Clay Brooker?
I'm gonna wave.
Come on up here.
Good morning, counsel. My name is Clay Brooker. I'm a land use attorney with the law firm of Cheffy Pasodomo at 821 Fifth Avenue South in Naples. I represent the owners of Parcels A and B, the Musca and the Wilson Lighting properties. These are the parcels up front, if you will, along 41. They are already developed. We are here because we joined in with this application. Mr. Mayor, I think you got it right. Whenever someone applies to amend a PD, all the property owners within that PD must join in. And we agree and fully support the applicant today with the project being proposed. So that's why we joined in with the application. And then when we got the staff recommendation that proposed some elimination of uses on our properties, we thought, uh-oh, whoa, this was not what we bought into. So that's what I'm here for, simply to object for the record to any changes at land use regulations applicable to our parcels on the front, but fully in support of the application as submitted.
Got it. Thank you very much. Thanks, Rich, or Clay. Amanda Brook, Brock, right? Brock. Yeah. It's totally a different spelling.
That's right. Thank you. Good morning. For the record, Amanda Brock, with Henderson Franklin. On behalf of parcel owners C, D, and E, E is the one that's here before you for the application. Mr. Brooker said exactly what we were going to say, just with respect to parcel C and D for us. So recognizing everyone else is here, I'm not gonna take more of your time. But we do support this project. We do not, however, support the recommended changes to the uses that staff has proposed. So, thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much. And David Cook, are you here, David? Oh, you saved for them. I'm sorry. Okay.
I'm sorry. He was at the zoning hearing, but we're with the same firm.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. And that's how we have for parties of record at this time. And counsel, what's your pleasure?
I'd like to make a motion to approve without the staff recommendations of the limitations on use.
And I'll make a second on that. And everyone understand the motion? All right? Good? All good? Roll call.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Okay, there you go.
Thank you very much.
Good. Thank you very much. Okay. And let's see, we're gonna get to here, here, really quick here. Make 'em, don't get too excited. All right. Audrey, what do you got next?
Okay. If we go in order of items, it's a very small one. This is an amendment to Benita Springs Land Development Code, Chapter 2, Article 6, Division 2, amending 2-190 and 2-191 relating to road impact fees, providing for conflicts of law, severability, codification, scrivener's errors, inclusion and code, and effective date. This is a first, sorry, this is a second reading of the ordinance. I have reviewed the affidavit of publication, and it is legally sufficient. I don't think counsel has any questions on it. There hasn't been any changes in a while since the May change.
Move the item.
Let's go ahead, we'll go ahead and wait for that, and we'll, any members of the public wish to speak to this item and this item alone, please come forward. This is on the impact fees. Seeing none, Bill?
Move the item.
Bill, I make a motion. There's a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Okay. Here we are to the well stimulation ordinance. Audrey?
Thank you. I'm going to read the title block into the record. This is an amendment to the Benita Springs Land Development Code, Chapter 4, amending Section 4-1380 relating to required approvals for excavation activities to prohibit well stimulation, providing for conflicts of law, severability, codification, scrivener's errors, inclusion in code, and effective date. This is a second reading of the ordinance. I can, I will tell you at this point, I will talk later during the hearing. So I'm going to keep my part short, but I did get a request from Ron Weaver, where he does wish to address the council early on for a request for continuance.
Gotcha.
Mr. Weaver?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Ron Weaver, for higher resources. We would respectfully request a continuance to October 21, 9:00 AM, which is one of your regular scheduled meetings. Give us 90 days to meet with everyone to figure out a safe way to continue with respect to regulation, not an illegal ban of fracking or of well stimulation, but to work together for the next 90 days. Emphasis on water supply and water quality, meeting with all parties, including, of course, the conservancy. There's no real science here yet. Let's get some science during these 90 days.
Easy, easy, easy. I'm gonna give you a chance. Everybody's gonna be able to come up here and gang up on it, okay?
Please do. Thank you.
Just wait, just wait.
Secondly, in addition to there being no science yet, we do not have any, with all due respect, good faith from the conservancy yet, and we hope for some during these 90 days. At 3:06 PM yesterday afternoon, we received an indication that they would be willing to settle with us if we would agree to no fracking chemicals. Now, at 3:06 PM yesterday afternoon, that's two business hours before this meeting. No fracking chemicals would be like putting your wife in the hospital for $4,000 a day and with an artificial lung, and they would tell you they'll take the $4,000 per day, but you can't have any artificial lung. Without fracking chemicals, you cannot engage in fracking. Let us and the conservancy during these 90 days work out a reasonable regulation. Let the state legislature continue to work on it, as they will in September committee meetings. They're convening in January.
I'm gonna, excuse me. Hey, we're gonna be, we're all gonna be good on this. You're all gonna get a chance to talk, and we don't need to sign. You can say that when you come up here, okay? Thank you very much, sir.
Please do.
I appreciate it. But go, go right ahead.
All right.
Let's give the gentleman a chance to talk. Come on.
You're very gracious, Mr. Mayor, and I'm very, we're all very grateful. The Lee County attorney has issued a 10-page written opinion that the fracking subject is preempted by state law. Why? So that the state can deal with this subject comprehensively and thoughtfully, and minerals don't know city limit signs. They can deal with it comprehensively with respect to those 12,000 feet below that are where those minerals are through seven impermeable layers below that surface. We respectfully request, if you would please, that we be allowed to proceed with a 90-day continuance. Please let the hundreds of mineral owner victims get a proper notice. They have not been properly noticed. Please let those hundreds of mineral owner victims get a proper notice and avoid any unnecessary litigation of those seven illegalities of this proposed ban. Illegal taking of property without compensation, a violation of the Burt Harris Property Rights Act in two particulars, including unreasonable burden and the bearing by Collier and the other hundreds of mineral owners of a disproportionate burden that ought to be borne by the public at large, due process overbreadth, and a failure to exhaust the least onerous alternative. Thank you very much for your time and for the opportunity to consider this continuance.
No problem. Thank you very much, sir.
Mr. Mayor.
Okay. And at this time, we are going to take public comment. And if you want, just all, just wanna kinda queue up here. Just don't wait one at a time. Don't be bashful. Just come right up here. Hey.
Hi.
Look at you, first in line.
Well, I have to. My mom's having an emergency right now. I gotta get home. And I wish I could've said everything I need to say, like, in the first 10 minutes of the meeting, I could've been out of here.
Well, that's the way the mayor is.
That's how America goes. Okay, mayor. First of all, I wanna congratulate Councilwoman Janet Martin for bringing this forward. I know it was something of great interest to her, and I want to compliment the council for having the courage, for looking at this issue, for listening to both sides of the issue, because I think you've done that. I think, I wanna thank our city attorney here. You know, she's got a pretty good record. I can only think of three cases where she might've messed up, but that's not her fault.
[laughing]
Okay?
They have, or might have.
No. And in those cases, she didn't actually, she just knew that, she didn't mess up. She actually knew that she had to settle, okay? And she settled it very well, okay? So if she tells you, hey, I think we can move, I could argue this either way. What a lawyer. I love that. Because I heard that last minute. I could argue this either way. I think you should just go for it. I think you should set a precedent and let it work itself out. Our city, our city attorney has found legal counsel to defend this city quite expertly over the last 14, 15 years. Yeah.
Fifteen.
Fifteen years. And we're still standing, aren't we? We haven't burned down yet. So again, I wanna congratulate Councilwoman Martin. I also want to thank, there are two people in this room that I've talked about when I was on council who saved this city. And they saved this city from having a nuclear power plant at Benita Bay. And I'm actually gonna bring you that article, because we've actually tracked it down. FPL was planning to put a nuclear power plant, or they're talking about putting a nuclear power plant before Benita Bay was developed. I wanna congratulate, where are they?
Here.
Thank you. John and Karen Dwyer.
Woo!
Could you imagine what it would've happened to our city if we didn't have Benita Bay and we ended up having a nuclear power plant there? Forget the whole West Coast. We are so successful, and it's because of people who make individual contributions to our community, like Karen Dwyer, like Councilwoman Martin, and like people like yourself. So support this. Let's move forward, and let's let our city attorney defend us. Thank you.
Okay. And by the way, we're gonna limit the applause and the other stuff, because I want everybody to feel confident. Somebody might come up here and have a dissenting view. I want them to feel comfortable to do that. I think that's important to all of us. So let's all speak our minds. Hi, speaking of which.
David Guest, Earth Justice. Good morning, commissioners. Earth Justice is here to support you. We are a national environmental law firm and nonprofit. We're the biggest one in the United States, offices in 10 cities. We have departments, specialties. We have, in our law firm in New York, we have the lawyers that won the fracking ordinances in other states. You all have heard about those, I'm sure. And I'm here as the head of the Florida office. I've been a litigator for 25 years. We have litigated oil extraction cases, and we have won. My former partner, Monica Reimer, represented the state in a takings case in oil extraction in about 2003 or '04, and won. You can win this. So we're here to support you, represent you, if necessary. We have represented local governments. I, myself, have represented Governor Bush and the cabinet in a case about 10 years ago. We can't charge fees by law because we're a nonprofit. We get our money from benefactors that like what we do. And I have two messages for you on the law here. One is that you get no advantage from delay, and you get a substantial disadvantage from delaying it. First, you'll have been threatened by the Colliers, threatened would be a strong word, I mean, informed of their interest in suing you for a takings case or Burt Harris violation. As things stand today, they don't have anything at all, because you have to have vested rights, and they don't have any. That could change, and likely would change, if you wait 90 days. So you're losing something, something serious by delaying. The second one is, I don't think the preemption idea is a plausible one. I don't think it's a legitimate argument at all. Amongst the reasons is that last year, in the, in the House of Representatives, there was a bill that would do just exactly that, it died in committee. So the legislature thought they needed to make it so it would preempt, and it doesn't. The law doesn't. They're more or less admitting that. This is not a good idea to postpone at all. It is not in your legal interest. If you do it, and I think you should, we will be there to fight. We've got the soldiers, we've got the resources, and we can do it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, next speaker, please. A smattering, that was okay. A smattering.
We have a handout we'd like to provide. I think we gave it to them already. Jennifer Hacker, on behalf of the Conservancy of Southwest Florida, speaking in support of the proposed ordinance to ban fracking and fracking-like well stimulation treatments within the Benita Springs city limits. The Conservancy has been working intensively on this issue, fracking in general, since the unauthorized fracking took place in North Collier County, and the experience of the state not being able to immediately stop such activity, even when the state itself stated that that technique had never been done in the state of Florida, was in need of study before being used, was a potential threat to groundwater resources, and should be suspended until there is a study done to understand the impacts on Florida's water resources and unique geology. Their inability to stop the activity despite ordering the driller to do so just illustrates how incredibly deficient current Florida oil and gas laws are to address these new threats. The Conservancy sought to work and bring forth comprehensive, meaningful legislation this past session that would do exactly that, suspend the use and study these well stimulation treatments using high-pressure injection of fracking chemicals underground before allowing their continued use. We met several times with Collier Resources about this and the need to encompass all three types of fracking-type stimulation, including not only standard hydraulic and acid fracturing, but also acid oil well stimulation with fracking chemicals, which is designed to dissolve the rock rather than fracture it. This was used at the Hogan well site in September, and for the first several months was also believed to be occurred what occurred during the violation, due to statements where the driller insisted that they had not fracked. Only much later did the DEP consultants conclude that they had. This acid stimulation is not to be confused with acid cleaning, where fluids stay primarily in the well. California has developed a simple formula to differentiate the two. This ordinance clearly explicitly only prohibits stimulation, not cleaning, therefore would not affect mineral right owners from accessing through conventional drilling techniques or any type of well-cleaning activities. We discussed this with the Colliers months ago. They had promised that if the definition that we were advocating for was unacceptable, they'd provide us an alternate definition. They never did so. Instead, they supported and actively lobbied for legislation that would not even regulate, study, or suspend the use of acid stimulation with fracking chemicals. And that legislation will likely be refiled this session, which exempts that fracking type of extraction. This ordinance was properly noticed. They were aware of it before the first hearing. Even upon the first hearing, we made a public invitation to meet with them. Our council reached out to their council and got no response. Again, there's been meetings ad nauseam about this underlying issue over the course of more than a year. So as evidenced by their prior actions and statements, they're not supporting state regulation or Benita's prohibition of the use of these techniques, and therefore, there's no justifiable reason, in our view, to delay adoption. We support Benita Springs passing this, and the Conservancy stands committed to legally defending it as an intervenor in support of the city, should the city desire us to do so, with our attorney providing legal assistance to the city council. Defending Benita's home rule to prevent unsustainable intensification of land use, whether it be from inappropriate development or from oil-drilling activities which threaten our water resources and quality of life here, is to be defended and preserved. These threats, risks are real. We should not let threats or requests for delay for delay's sake impede us from taking this urgently needed action. Thank you for doing just that and passing this ordinance today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Dr. Karen Dwyer, Stone Crab Alliance, 50-year neighbor. You are right. Now is the time to ban fracking. At the last meeting, you voted unanimously to move forward with an ordinance that would ban oil well stimulation, including fracking, within city limits. We're wearing red today in visible support of a ban. In defense of the city, the Burt Harris Act claim seems invalid, since no oil and gas has been found in Benita, and hence no actual mineral rights exist to protect. Benita's oil reserves are as yet undiscovered, and hence speculative, and Burt Harris only deals with non-speculative hence speculative, and Burt Harris only deals with non-speculative, real property. Regarding the take, this ordinance would not prohibit Collier from taking or extracting oil. They could still use conventional oil drilling, just not well stimulation that poses a threat to water resources, like hydraulic fracturing, acid fracking, and acidizing. Your ordinance is well timed. The 2015 legislation failed us. SB 1468 was a pro-fracking bill and would have continued to allow fracking and the nondisclosure of toxic chemicals. Worse yet, it would have taken away Benita's home rule right to protect itself with bans, setbacks, and water restrictions. We don't want the state preempting our home rule right. Since Tallahassee and Washington are not helping us, you are right to protect our water with a local ban. Well stimulation depletes and contaminates water supplies. It uses millions of gallons of fresh water and thousands of gallons of toxic chemicals. Everything from benzene, a carcinogen, to hydrofluoric acid, a corrosive, that eats bone, steel, and rock. The EPA warns that flowback can be radioactive and contain deadly heavy metals. The water used is contaminated forever, and unlike agricultural water, can never be reused. Given the worldwide water scarcity and water shortages in Florida, it is irresponsible for industry to destroy so much fresh water. Add in Florida's highly porous limestone that facilitates the migration and surfacing of toxic fracking fluids, and the ever-present possibility of leaks and spills, and the case is closed. Secure a local ban. We know DEP won't help us. A case in point is the 2014 unauthorized fracking at the Hogan Well, just 10 miles from here. DEP was onsite at the time of the fracking to observe, but not stop the violation, because the inspector, I quote, "did not have enforcement powers." DEP photographed the cancer-causing chemicals, but failed to stop the violation, failed to notify the county, failed to test the water, and kept secret the violation for months during all the federal and key hearings. DEP lacks the power to protect us. We need a local ban. Please vote yes. No continuance today. Thank you for protecting our water and the city.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Joe Mulay, President of Preserve Our Paradise. We fought and litigated successfully to stop fracking in Collier County. Let me say this. I heard, and I almost had to burst out in laughter, but I controlled myself, when I heard the gentleman who's the attorney for, uh, Collier Resources use the word "victims" several times, referring to those people who have the mineral rights. I see the young people who are here this morning, and I see those as potential victims. I see those as the victims of the dangers that these people bring to the table. You don't know what you're facing if you allow this and if you don't stop it. In Collier County, we had extensive meetings, and I went several times before the Collier County Commission, and one specific meeting was addressed by the Emergency Response Department. Let me say what, folks. The response back after they did a lot of studying was, "We are not prepared for this." Clearly, Collier County as a whole is not prepared. You're gonna have oil trucks barreling back and forth down residential streets. How are you gonna handle the damage if you have a spill? If we look at California today, look at their spill, how are they handling this? You won't be able to. I hear you talking about beautification. I hear you talking about making this beautiful city even better, attractive to more people. This goes completely in the opposite direction. When you have someone like Rex Tillerson, CEO of ExxonMobil, the mother of all frackers, that went publicly and stopped fracking in his neighborhood in Texas. Why? Because the water towers were not aesthetically pleasing. He did not want it in his neighborhood, but he wants it in our neighborhoods out here. And what you're gonna get is not the big corporations, either. You're gonna get companies like Hughes, that was out in Collier trying to do this. Wildcatters. People who are in to make a dime, and they're out. They don't really care. I laud you for your courage to address this issue today. Other municipalities have done the same thing. Miami-Dade County, Broward County, and numerous other cities in Florida have enacted bans to stop this. I urge you to do it. Do not hesitate. Do not allow these folks to lull you into a sense of being that says, "Oh, we want to defend those victims." No. Defend the victims that are your constituents. Take care of those people. Take action today. Do not let this go any further. Do not delay. Take the action to stop this. Enact that ban, and the people will thank you, and you will have done a wonderful and great thing for all of us in South Florida. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, next speaker, please. Hello.
Pamela Duran, and I was one of the 32--
Pamela, could I ask you to pull that microphone down a little bit? We want to hear you.
I was one of the 32 families in the evacuation zone. I, when I received the letter, I called, um, Collier Resources, and, um, Tom Jones and Christian Spelker came to my house, and I asked them for only two things. We would be placed outside of the evacuation zone, and that the trucks would use other roads that weren't the residential roads that the school buses are on. We were told we're not important. Tom Jones threatened me and my husband in front of other people that he was going to come on our property and drill in our backyard. We own our property, the surface rights. We even own our mineral rights. We have five acres. We retired because we wanted a little farm to grow fruit and vegetables. For two years, we have put our life on hold. The stress is unbelievable, and it still is. You don't want this for your residents. Nobody protected us. No, the Commissioners? We even had the fire chief said, "We'll just swim across the canal if you can't get out." Really? Really? To be disgraced and treated in this manner is-- I'm surprised I'm in America. I have told my husband, who is miss-- who is a citizen but was born in Columbia, that this is not the America that I grew up believing in. I don't know what the lawyers thinking, but they have come, bullied us, videotaped us, even urinated in front of us. When, in that area, there's like thousands of trees you could go behind. It's just unbelievable that, you know, did this happen in the wild, wild west? Is, I mean, I thought we were civilized. You know, when you invite somebody to your house and try to negotiate, you're not a-- I, that was a simple negotiation, a place to talk, but they shut us down, wouldn't let us, and just told us, you know, we've been told in that area, because there's, uh, immigrants, and it's a multicultural neighborhood, that we're not important. And to have this in the United States is unbelievable. I really hope your residents don't have to go through this, because I still live in the fear that they can come back and issue another permit. I have no guarantee. I have no safety. I, we have thought about just getting out of Florida, but we're stuck here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, next speaker, please.
Thank you. I'm John Dwyer, Stone Crab Alliance, and, uh, I could be called a naysayer by some people here. However, I choose my battles very carefully. Uh, the nuclear power plant was one. Pope Francis reminds us that Saint Francis in 1280 insisted that part of the Friary Garden be left always untouched, so that wildflowers and herbs could grow there, and those who saw them could raise their minds to the Creator of such beauty. The Benita Council today can institute a legal framework which sets clear boundaries and ensures the protection of our water. Mr. Weaver told the council that old lie. Oil in this area is located 12,000 feet below the surface, so far below freshwater sources that aquifers are protected from fracking chemicals by seven impermeable membranes, pushing everyone to believe in the fiction of the CAD drawings, and into believing that the layers of pipes and concrete casings penetrating the aquifers will never, ever leak. We learned in chemistry class that there's no such thing as impermeable barriers, and that all pipes leak. And in geology class, that one of the reasons little oil and gas has ever been found here is that our porous karst geology is filled with holes, many of which lead to the surface. An enormous plumbing system has been formed within the 16,500-foot-thick carbonate rocks resting on top of Florida's basement plate. It resembles poorly-made Swiss cheese. Furthermore, we have unplugged deep holes. Drilled during the past 70 years, the deadly poisons from fracking do not safely stay underground in little lakes far from the surface. Although we cannot see them, the waters beneath us do flow freely. These waters do move up and down and sideways. Neither the council nor the public should depend upon the assurances of the oil industry, its geologists, or its attorneys. The fracked corkscrew swamp well proves that we cannot depend on the DEP or the EPA. This drilling is categorically unlike what the Colliers have done for decades. Only home rule can save us from the Colliers' fracking. It is not the Colliers who are at risk. It's not the drillers or oil companies who are at risk. It is we and our children who are at risk. Laws preempting cities' power to regulate fracking have passed in Ohio, Texas, and Oklahoma, and they are on the agenda of the Florida Legislature. It is essential that we rush. Stop them while you can. The new drilling technology is not safe. Saying does not make it so. It causes permanent water contamination, as well as dangerous air and soil pollution. Fracking brings local harms, so it should be subject to local control. We must insist with Francis that the garden that is Benita Springs be always a part of Florida that is left altogether untouched by fracking. Do it today, please.
Thank you very much. Uh, next speaker, please.
Uh, yes, Alexander Grant, former city councilman, former LPA member here. Uh, as you well know, I'm a member of the American Chemical Society for a number of years, and I believe you have these, uh, I made sure that each one of you got a copy of this. So, this is what you're looking at for Benita Springs if this ordinance is postponed or fails. This is what you're looking for. Now, the, uh, chemicals involved, you saw in the publication, I'm not going to regenerate that. The hydrogel that could green up the fracking, it's an unknown, uh, theory, untested. You don't want to test it in Benita Springs, because we've got 60% of our drinking water comes from the DRGR area, and that is our pursuit of happiness, which I think would in the United States Supreme Court, should we have to go with this, uh, incident. Uh, I believe the pursuit of happiness of the 47,000 or 50,000 illegal residents Benita Springs supersedes the Burt Harris Act. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. Hello.
Hey, good morning.
Hey.
For the record, Donna Knapp. Um, I and my former husband used to run a shrimp boat before the BP spill. Um, I now run a small vacation rental business. Um, I'd like to commend you all for, um, holding fast against the fossil fuel companies and the Colliers. Many of us have been fighting for years now, and as one of my friends stated, we've had to put our, uh, our lives on hold. Uh, I remember the very first meeting, um, with the Colliers and the Hughes Oil Company, where we, we were told, when we asked them, we were told that they would not frac when they were asked. They said they would not frac. Well, they did. Not only did they frac, but they illegally fracked only 20 minutes from where I live. The water still hasn't been two and a half, nearly three years later, that water still has not been tested properly, only just a few feet down. And, you know, these pictures here, to me, just say it all. First of all, I see the children. We, we have to think about our future generations and the kind of, the kind of life we're going to leave, lead, leave to them. And the, the water, the water that our tourists are using, that they're soaking in, in the Shangri-La picture here, I mean, I could just imagine them soaking in fracking fluids, because it's not, it's not a question of if these pipelines burst, it's when they will burst, because as you know, many, many, although the media tried to keep quiet about it, many pipelines across our nation have broken, and oil has leaked out, and in some cases, the farmers, two, three years later, they still can't use that land. So, we have to think about water conservation. Water is the source of all life. It's not a resource. And, and pumping chemicals down into the ground like that, and there's a reason also why New York, the state of New York, has banned fracking, because there have been so many doctors and people in the health profession that have got up and, and, and stated how bad this is for our water. They've found fracking fluids in, in the water supply of people in Pennsylvania. So, I, I say, "Don't, don't give these entities an inch, or they'll take a mile." You can't trust what they say. You, you can't trust at all, and you must hold fast for all of us in this community. I, I don't live here now, but I live just a few miles down the road. I was a 10-year resident of Benita when it was a village. I've seen many changes here, but please do not let fracking or well stimulation or acidization, whatever name they want to call it, it's pumping cancerous chemicals down into our water supply. Water, the source of all life, without it, we die. So, please, please stay strong for all of us. We're depending on you, and we're here also to back you. We're wearing red. I wished it could say, it says "Save the Black Hills," well, that's for uranium mining. I wish it, my shirt would also say that "Save Benita Springs." Don't, Benita Springs is not for sale. We can't drink oil. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, next speaker, please. Come on forward.
Good morning. Uh, I am Jaime Duran. Not a resident of Benita Springs, but an area that is dear to me. This subject is very dear to me, because for the last two years, myself, my wife, and a couple of neighbors initiated a fight against the oil companies, against the Collier family, um, to keep him away from our land, to not drill 1,000 feet from our house. I'm here to commend you on your efforts and to give you my full support for the courage that you have shown in making sure that your citizens, your city, remains what it is today. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Greeting board members. For the record, Noah Kugler, professional geologist with H2O Geo Solutions. I'm gonna pretty much read from something that I put together, so I'll be looking down some. Uh, I have 10 years of experience with major consulting firm in the area, and four years of experience as the water use permitting supervisor and senior groundwater model reviewer for the South Florida Water Management District. For the last three and a half years, I've run my own hydrogeologic company. The fracking technology developed in the early 2000s allowed for extraction of previously uneconomical target zones. Necessary for this process is large amounts of water and some potentially very hazardous chemicals. Prior to the 2000s, traditional oil exploration and recovery was a very different process, using much less water and chemical additives that are currently used to enhance the fracking stimulation process. stimulation process. The management of water is so critical in Florida that the water management districts are charged with assessing how much water is in the ground, which is a limited resource, and planning for its use. Water use permits are issued on a primary level based on reasonable and beneficial use. However, an oil company decides what is reasonable and beneficial when applying for water use permit regarding the quantities of water they will use during their process. This water, as we've discussed, leaves the hydraulic cycle never to be used again, you know, for our purposes or the environment. Uh, the karst and porous geology limestone of Florida does allow for rapid movement of contaminants through large and unknown pathways with very little ability for the ground to clean up contamination. The occurrence of massive anhydrite layers between the oil-bearing zones and the USDW, our drinking water source, does not fully negate potential pathways of contamination into water that we use. Lack of regulation in the industry and trade-secret philosophy leads to the fact that wells are constructed with little to no oversight. Under the best of construction conditions, well can still have problems with casings and cementings based on formational differences. In other words, some formations are very challenging to properly cement and set casings in. For lack of regulation oversight leads to cutting of corners to save time and money, which makes well construction even more questionable. And I must say again, nobody oversees these wells but the, but the oil drillers, the construction of the wells. We've been told that installation of steel casings and cement is an iron-clad protection. However, we have seen, particularly at the Hogan well, that this is not always the case. Numerous issues while drilling the well and setting, properly setting and cementing the casings were encountered over and over again, leading the DEP's own consultant to conclude numerous pathways, numerous potential, potential pathways due to well construction. A drill bit and numerous feet of drill pipe were lost down the hole and never recovered. The materials known as junk left in the bore hole led the consultant also to conclude that the seals of the final production string, which would be under pressures of several thousand PSI above formation pressures, could have been damaged, leading to leakage. The pressures and volumes of fluids using, used during fracking make it possible for it to be forced back up marginally sealed or improperly constructed wells. Studies have shown failure rates of well integrity to be significant. Literature can be, uh, made available if requested. Finally, you've heard a lot about the EPA study and its conclusive nature. The EPA study is a draft and is yet inconclusive. Many of the questions, many questions remain unanswered, and data is still in the process of being gathered. With that, if there are any questions later on, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you very much, sir.
Best to my ability. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Uh, next speaker, please. There's a familiar face.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and council members. Ray Judah with the Florida Coastal and Ocean Coalition. Let me say also at the outset how very proud I am of all of you, your city manager, your city attorney, for taking the position that you are today on really addressing probably one of the most critical issues, not only here in southwest Florida, in the state of Florida, but our entire country. Trying to protect one of the most critical resources to sustain life that's being jeopardized by fracking throughout this country. And, um, I really do applaud you. And let me also say, as former county commissioner and prior to that, a former planner, your ordinance is consistent with planning principles. So feel strongly that you have a strong legal position. I hope that you will, in fact, take this to its ultimate conclusion, that is to finalize the adoption of this order at its second hearing today. Um, I have to tell you, I, um, when I hear comments like from one of your previous speakers, I won't mention any names, about leaving it up to the state to help protect and manage our resources, you know, I'm reminded of what's happened over the last several years where the state legislature and governor have completely obliterated all our growth management landmark legislation. Uh, they've gutted the budgets of the South Florida Water Management District, in fact, all the water management districts and DEP, which we rely on to help protect our water resources. Um, this is the same legislature that you well know is so dysfunctional, they couldn't even, utilizing taxpayer money, come up with a budget during their regular session, they had to spend more taxpayer money to have a special session. And there's also the same legislature and governor that took, um, and ignored the will of the people, 4.2 million people, 75% of the voters, to support Amendment One, to help buy Environment Sense of Land. Instead, they use that money to help balance the budget. And so, no, I don't think it would be advisable to rely on the state legislature or governor in dealing with this issue of extreme oil extraction. In fact, I found out not too long ago in Cuyahoga County, and thanks to the support of the Stone Crab Alliance and the Conservancy of Southwest Florida and the Clean Water Initiative and other individuals and organizations that were really concerned about what Danny Hughes was trying to accomplish in Cuyahoga County with securing a DEP permit at the time to drill some 12,000 feet for oil. Uh, the real issue, though, was what were they gonna do with their, their, and dispose of their drilling fluids? That was gonna be discharged some 3,000 feet in a so-called Boulder Zone, the lower end of the fluoronocifer, which is the major water resource for the entire state of Florida. And their, uh, position was that a 700-foot so-called confinement layer composed of dolomite, which is calcium carbonate, and limestone was gonna prevent the S, the acid dissolving of the action of those drilling fluids that would ultimately contaminate the fluoronocifer. I can assure you, and I think you well would recognize, that 700 feet of dolomite and limestone is not gonna prevent the acid drilling fluids from contaminating the fluoronocifer. You know, you can look at possibly cleaning up a land-based or a cer, land-surface oil spill, and maybe in the next 30, 40 years, we'll ultimately clean up the BP, uh, Deep Water Horizon oil spill in our oceans and our estuaries. But how do you end up restoring or, or cleaning up a contaminated aquifer? It just can't be done. I hope that you'll stand firm with your convictions and do something that will help set a precedent for the rest of this country, your courage, your, your, of your convictions to actually go ahead and move forward with supporting the banning of fracking here in Benita Springs. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Uh, next speaker, please.
Deborah McLean, publisher of The Banana Pile. There is more transparency in the Iran nuclear agreement than in this information from the Collier family, the incestuous cousins, Cantor and Collier, of the Exxon Group. The same thing is happening here that happened to California, and I am against the Californication of the city of Benita Springs, and I am against the three people sitting in front of me that are Californicators. And so I say to you, pass this ordinance right away today.
Well.
Heck, was that?
There you go.
She lost me.
You're next.
Hi. Follow that.
I gotta get my dictionary out here.
Thanks, Ben. Uh, some of you do know me. My name is Loretta Lynch Goldenberg. I moved here back in 1992 to raise my three sons and my husband and enjoy our life in Benita Springs. I have been proud of being a member of the city, voted for the city, and have always supported you. Never spoke before, but I have to stand up today and say I was proud when I read in the paper that my city was gonna stand up against fracking.
Can you pull that microphone down towards your mouth a little bit? There you go. I wanna hear you. Everybody else. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you so much, and please, support us and future generations of this world.
Thank you very much for coming today. All right, next speaker.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor.
Morning.
Uh, council members, I'm David Micah. I'm the director of the Florida Petroleum Council. We're a division of the American Petroleum Institute, and we represent all facets of the industry, uh, from the beginning of looking for it to ultimately when you get to a pump and you use our products to get to meetings like this today. I thank you for the opportunity to be with you. I'll try and stay as close within the, the timeframes, and I would appreciate a little latitude if possible. I, I, I sent you a letter, uh, and I'd like to give you a, a hard copy of that today. Sent it via email, but you never know what's gonna happen in cyberspace, but I wanted you to have that. Um, you know, we as Floridians, we use an awful lot of my industry's product. We're, we're, we're the third-largest state now, and, uh, we use about 28 million gallons a day of motor fuel. It's my industry's responsibility to get that to you, and we have to get that, and that's what we try to do. We really wanna do it in the safest, most environmentally responsible way that we can, contrary to some of what you may have heard this morning. We have a great history in this state. It's, it's remarkable. Today is the 30th anniversary of the day that I started with this industry. And if you go back long before that, we've been producing oil and gas in, in Florida since 1943. We've produced an awful lot. Um, in this trend down here, the sunny land trend, we've produced about 120 million barrels of oil. That equates to almost 5 billion gallons of motor fuel. And I'm not familiar with drinking water problems and major environmental problems that my industry has occurred, really. And, uh, I, uh, I, I will close a little bit more about my history there in a moment, but we've really experienced a significant renaissance in this country because of efforts associated with changes in the technology and engineering that we can provide. Not perfect. We train our young people, we ask them to become STEM, science, technology, engineering, and math students so that they can go into endeavors to bring us more energy security in our nation domestically. And it begins in places like Benita Springs where mineral rights and prospects occur. So as you go forward here, I think it's very important to consider what our state has done to regulate our industry, the Florida Department of Environmental Regulation, which has been maligned pretty seriously so far, and look at their record associated with the protection of our drinking water supplies associated with oil and gas activities in our state, and look at that in the perspective of where we are. May not be perfect, but I think the track record and the evidence is strong there. We are taking place in, in our activities well below the aquifer, uh, miles below. We believe we can do that with American engineering and technology and with environmental protections that work. We've, we have used some of the newer technologies with over a million wells. We need to do those forward. We believe that your proposal is overly broad and it is too restrictive, essentially approaching a ban, if not a ban. And we think that it can be called a regulatory taking and could expose your city to unnecessary and costly lawsuits. We hope that's not the case. We hope you'll reconsider. Let me close, if I may, with just a personal.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. I appreciate the little allowance on the time here.
Go right ahead.
And, um, as I look at the, the map, and I talk about being a stakeholder to this state, uh, your pictures are awesome, your murals behind us, they represent generations gone by. My children are seventh-generation Floridians, and I learned recently that there's gonna be an eighth-generation Floridian, uh, and I'm gonna be a grandfather. It's a big deal to me, really, really big deal. We need to protect my grand, future grandchildren's Florida for not just his generation, but for eight generations going forward. I stand before you today committed to an industry that wants that same protection. I thank you for your time and also for your public service in stepping forward into the arena and making decisions that are important like this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Nice time.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, next speaker, please.
Good morning. My name is Nancy Kerner. For the record, I own property in Forestmere, which is part of Benita Preserve. Interesting, preserve. We like to think that when we buy into a name, it personifies the ongoing destiny of the area. But generically speaking, it's been my experience that preserve only means something that lasts long enough until enough money is on the table to compromise it. I understand the desire for money. I even understand the concept of greed. What I don't understand is suicide. And that's what fracking means for an area like this. Fracking is so counterproductive to tourism, counterproductive to health and prosperity, counterproductive to nature, wildlife, and future generations. It's all about the topography here. If you don't know what karst is, you should get informed. This whole peninsula of Florida pretty much is floating on a, on a main aquifer. The whole state is made up of, of karst, a topography which is actually eulitic limestone, and spider webbing throughout this limestone are the aquifers. Karst, a topography, makes water do two things. It either sinks down into the aquifer or it bubbles up from the aquifer. That's what it does. There is no way anyone can drill down through limestone and tap into the aquifers or pass the aquifers without contamination. And there are so many ways for contamination to occur when we look at fracking, besides the leaks in the well casings. You're, you're also talking about a state that has massive water battles ahead of them already. Uh, the amount of water that would be used and the disposal of the wastewater, where are you gonna put it? Water sinks, eventually it all goes down, it all goes down to the water table. We're dealing with problems with the Kalusahatchee, we're dealing with the Everglades, it's all one battle. I disagree when they say if spills occur. It's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when. Always a matter of when. Why put ourselves in that position to begin with? The world we are destroying is our own. Generically speaking, the planet isn't really at risk. We are. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, next speaker, please. Come on up.
My name is Joe Stager. I don't have any expert opinion, just a concerned citizen. Um, I have, well, I take that back. I am a grandfather, so to my grandkids, I do have somewhat of an expert opinion. And really, that's why I'm here, is, um, in, I'm, I'm here for them, not for me. I think maybe I've got another 20 years left, and I think if this oil proceeds here, big oil, I think it would be a ticking time bomb. I think that I could be gone by then, most of us could be gone by then, but what we're leaving for our children is, is just an incredible act of irresponsibility. Um, I think we owe that to them. I think we, we need to get our moral compass straight here, at least get it back and realize what is most important in life. And leave something that we can be proud of. And the big oil companies are just looking at a media profit. I mean, that's, for them to even consider doing this is, is telling us that really money is the bottom line. So we need to do the moral thing here and say no. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good morning.
Hello.
Counsel. Patty Whitehead, with her Responsible Growth Management Coalition, for the record, Estero resident, member of Estero Land Use Board, Benita Springs business owner. It is vitally important that you pass this resolution today. The issues before you are not just about the resource of oil, but about the resource of water, and I will echo many of the comments that have been made by the previous speakers. Our water resources in this country are protected under the public trust doctrine. Now let me give you a quick snapshot of what the public trust doctrine entails. Across cultures and continents, communities have always imbued certain natural resources with a sense of permanent public ownership. This unique status for these resources, such as the ocean, certain water bodies, shorelines, submerged lands, and the air reflect their immense importance to individuals and society as a whole. These resources belong to the public, and no private entity can ever acquire the right to monopolize or deprive the public of the right to use and enjoy them. In legal terms, the concept became known as the public trust doctrine, imported into the United States as common law from ancient Roman, Spanish, and English law. This is from, this quote is from Joseph Sacks, a renowned legal scholar. "Of all the concepts known to American law, only the public trust doctrine seems to have the breadth and substantiative content which might make it useful as a tool of general application for citizens seeking to develop a comprehensive legal approach to resource management problems." At the present time, the Sierra Club has an emergency petition before the Environmental Protection Agency, the EPA, to designate our aquifer, the Floridaan aquifer, as a sole-source aquifer. And one of the discoveries that was made in their hydrogeological studies was that we have a unique situation in Florida with our aquifers. Our surface water and our groundwater are indistinguishable from each other, okay? We have many places in the state where our, our groundwater upwells into surface water and our surface water recharges our groundwater. So therefore, we must protect this resource by all means possible. And fracking, as has been proven in other states, is highly contaminative of, of, of water resources, both surface and groundwater. The very best move you can make at the present time to protect our water resources is by passing this ban. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Uh, next speaker, please.
Hello. My name is Joel.
Hey, Joel.
I just have a few comments. We begin these meetings with a prayer. Well, if you do believe in God, the greatest gift we've received is our lives. The air, the water, our land is what enables us to live. We need to treasure and save Well, if you do believe in God, the greatest gift we've received is our lives. The air, the water, our land is what enables us to live. We need to treasure and save and protect these resources. They are a part of the commons and they belong to all of us. In Florida, the future does not have anything to do with pumping oil. The future is going to be ecotourism, the future is going to be having people come here and enjoy these gifts that we've been given from God. Period. The future is the children that you brought up here at the very beginning of this meeting, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much, Joel. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. My name is John Scott. Thank you for allowing us to.
Want to get you a box to stand on? Sorry, sorry.
It's okay. My name's John Scott, I'm the group chair for the Sierra Club Closer Group here. We serve over 1,700 members in four counties, Lee, Collier, Henry, and Glades, and I just wanted to let you know you have our full support. As you may or may not know, the Sierra Club's official position on fracking is for a ban, not regulation, but a ban. So obviously, this ordinance would be aligned with the Sierra Club's position on this, and you would have our full support. And I would just like to say that, you know, you'd be hard pressed to find a form of environmental attack, and as we all in here know that are working tirelessly to preserve Florida's natural beauty, there are many forms of attack on our environment and on the natural beauty of Florida right now. But you'd be hard pressed to find one worse than fracking. And for one of our previous speakers who for some reason didn't seem to understand that there were any environmental issues or repercussions of any kind associated with fracking, please, come look me up because I could supply you with probably a good 10 or 12 documentaries that will specifically show you the environmental impacts and the real victims of fracking, not people who have mineral rights. So this is obviously something that we're all very passionate about, and we applaud your leadership, and I think as it was said before, you could set a precedent, especially for some of our neighbors, say, in Collier County, to do something similar, because I think that if you look at it from an economic perspective, you're talking about a 70-plus billion-dollar-year tour industry, a tourism industry, that you would be forsaking if you're allowing fracking to take hold in Florida because of our geology and the environmental damage that it could do. I appreciate you allowing us to come up here and comment. Thank you very much. I would urge you to move forward with the ban. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next speaker, please.
Pam Garibilli. I am with Preserve Our Paradise, and I'm also a landowner in Bonita Springs, and I love it, and it's beautiful. And I would also like to tell you that two years ago, before all of this was starting, we were just getting to find out that there was going to be some kind of fracking, or at the very first being, the permits came out, and there was only 12 of us that started paying attention. And now look at what you've got. You have so many environmentalists here, you have attorneys that are helping you. All I'm saying is, we are here for you. I thank you so much for starting this. Yes, we do need a ban, we do need a positive decision today, and we are here to help you. Don't be afraid of landowners that have mineral rights, you know, big corporations, they're not people. And so, please, please, trust us, we are here, we have Facebooks, we blog, we are out there, we're telling everybody what's happening. You have hundreds of thousands of people that will come out and support you. So you're the leader, let's follow your lead, and let's bring it to Collier County as well, as well as everywhere else. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
Good morning. Ralph Brooks, attorney for the Conservancy of Southwest Florida. I want to thank you today for scheduling this second reading and for adopting this ordinance today. 60 or 90 days, I can tell you, is enough time to file an application with DEP. I reviewed and challenged the Golden Gate Permit, and they are cookie cutter permits. They take applications from other states and they actually use liquid paper whiteout, and they change the names of the locations, and they insert their new names, and they file them. It's not that hard to get an application filed in 60 days. You run the danger that they will do so while you wait. We have negotiated for the past year and a half with Collier Resources to no avail. I asked them yesterday in an email whether they agree to prohibit using fracking chemicals, and you heard their response today, and that was no, they would not agree to do that. You heard them today say that there is no science to support a prohibition, there is plenty of science to support a prohibition. I have PDFed scientific studies and science summaries to city staff, and I have a copy here that I'll provide to the clerk for today's adoption hearing, including a study called Fluid Migration Mechanisms Due to Faulty Well Construction in the Pennsylvania Marshallis Shale by Anthony Ingraffa, who's a PE and a PhD, and was done in January of 2013. He found that over 6% of the wells drilled were done with faulty construction and provided migration mechanisms. That meant in 2011 in Pennsylvania, of the 1,937 wells that were drilled, there were 121 failures. In 2010, of the 1,454 wells drilled there, there were 90 failures. In 2012, 262 wells were drilled and there were 19 failures, they didn't get the whole year in there. But imagine 19 failures out of 260 wells. Are we willing to run that risk? I should hope not. I have also submitted additional whereas clauses to help support the ordinance. It does not change the title of the ordinance, does not require re-advertising. Those are included in your RADA sheet. I urge you to include in your motion to approve today that you include those additional whereas clauses, and that will help us defend the ordinance. You have received previously my letter response regarding the takings and Burt Harris claims. I will submit that again today for the record on the second reading. And again, I urge you to do this today because between now and 60 days or 90 days, they're not going to agree to stop using chemicals. They want to set this up for the legislature, where their lobbyist, Mr. Micah is here, his brother is Representative Micah from Winter Park, he's in the US Congress, and he supported a letter supporting drilling offshore in Florida. He was the only member of Florida Congressional Delegation of Washington that supported drilling in Florida. We don't want that to happen here in Bonita Springs. It has the potential to change the landscape. They are proposing wells near residences in Golden Gate, you heard the testimony, less than 1,000, less than 2,000 feet from residences. They have oil wells, conventional wells, near Sunshine Elementary in Lehigh Acres. We don't want oil wells near our public schools in Bonita, near our city hall, near the retirement communities, the people moved here to enjoy the ecology and the environment of the area. We moved here because Bonita is beautiful, like you see in the mural behind you and in the wood cutting in the hallway. We're not moving here to work in oil fields. And so, thank you very much for supporting this ordinance, you're really setting the precedent here, and you're going to stop applications from being filed between now and the second reading. If we can get the second reading done today, if there are issues, we can. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. I'm Carolyn Gallagher. I just wanted to add my momentum to a lot of these other comments. I know the fracking has been growing in the public's eye as mounting evidence comes to light regarding the harm it does. Fracking is not just a present threat, it is a future one. We have no way of knowing where the damage from fracking will occur, but it will, just as it has from the BP Gulf oil spill, that couldn't happen. By the way, their profits are so high, it seems that not, they don't even feel the 20 billion that they've paid out so far in claims. But the claimants and the public have felt it. The legal system has not been concerned about protecting the public until after damage is done and lawsuits emerge. Many want this passed. I also want the city to look at banning the reach of the fracking wells outside our city so that they cannot reach under our homes within our city. As you know, horizontal fracturing can, or fracking can occur for a long distance away from where the well originates. I also believe that we should look into stopping the mineral rights that others have under our own homes. I know this is draconian, but there is emerging evidence that sinkholes can result from taking oil, gas, and water out of our earth. Those types of things can happen under our own homes, in addition to the things that are implied, like contamination of wells, and so on. So, good for you, City Council, for taking this on. I think this is a good first step ordinance, and I hope you pass it. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time? There he is.
Rick Steinmeier. What a group we got here. Somebody sold mineral rights to somebody else. Maybe it was a politician somewhere, some government agency sold these rights to somebody, and somebody paid real money for them. So they have some value, they must have had some value. I remember up in Pennsylvania, they were a dollar an acre. You could have a 17-acre farm, you could get $17, and you sell your mineral rights, and nobody ever came around to do anything with them. They have some value. Anybody consider buying these mineral rights from the people in the city that own them? Who owns them? Does Collier County own all of them? There's a lot of things I think that should be considered before we get involved with this. What I would suggest is a one-year, I suggest that pass this ordinance and revisit it in one year's time to see whether the science has proven anything different than we have. I don't think it's going to make much difference, but it looks to me, you know, like the people that are going to be damaged from this ordinance are going to break this city because they got billions of dollars, and it's going to turn into an Attorney's Welfare Act. Attorneys are not cheap, and this is, on a monetary basis, I understand the concerns for the environment. In fact, when I grew up, I grew up about 25 miles from a city called Frackville. And then, when I was young, they stopped, they used to strip mine coal, they just take the whole top of the mountain out and get the coal away. Then they did deep water, deep mines, and at one time, they didn't have GPS or whatever it is, and they came up into the bottom of the Susquehanna River, and 32 people drowned, and they were dumping railroad cars in the hole trying to plug this hole up. I mean, nothing's free. But I would suggest that we seriously consider throwing in a revisit on this ordinance and passing it today with a revisit that maybe will keep us out of the courts. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, let me have 10 seconds.
Yeah, you got it.
Ronaldell Weaver. Our client, Collier Resources, has explicitly authorized me to say in writing that they will not apply for a well permit within the next 60 or 90 days of a continuance.
Easy, easy. Go ahead.
If it's continued, we would not apply for such a well, or for such a well stimulation permit within the next 60 or 90 days if you saw fit to grant such continuance, and I just thought I would make that as a part of courtesy.
Thank you for your input.
If you'd let me, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I think, I think you've already had a dip in a well, haven't you, there? So to speak?
Just one sentence. One sentence.
Now, if I let you, I got to let everybody, but thank you very much for your offer. Has anyone who hasn't spoken, which is to speak? Are we done? With this part? All right. Now, it's up to us. Before I said, turn you loose there, attorney, Janet, did you have, you had something you wanted to say?
If you want to let Audrey, and then, then I'll be glad to.
Audrey, go ahead.
Thank you, and I appreciate it. Council, around 8:50 this morning, and I apologize for the delay, I did send you a copy transmitted by email, so you don't have a copy, a hard copy, but a hard copy is being put into the record, which is studies that the Conservancy of Southwest Florida cited today during the public hearing. Mr. Brooks was kind enough to cite them, but I did want to put them in the physical record so you had an index of the studies, and they're various studies as to the health and consequences to the community as to fracking. With this being said, and one of the ones you did get a copy of was the impact of well stimulation, but there was additional documents that were provided. I also wanted to bring up, and I'm looking, I apologize, I'm just looking for my notes, there we go. So if the motion is today is to approve, it should be based at the testimony you received at the hearing, including the documented studies that were provided, and leave the record open for a composite index to be provided in the record. I want to point out, this is a zoning ordinance, and in the state of Florida, we are lucky that Florida Statute Section 377.24 specifically requires, in the regulatory scheme for any kind of gas and oil exploration, requires local approval through this local zoning. We already have in place a special exception process for regular gas and oil exploration. This would prohibit one type of gas and oil exploration. I found it interesting during the testimony today of David Micah, because David Micah, proud of his industry, pointed out that they have already received from the Sunnyland Trench 123 million gallons that have been obtained through conventional gas and oil exploration. So I recognize that, you know, they are trying to get more and trying to do things, but whether it's appropriate in a municipal area is something that I think goes within the zoning authority that council needs to look at, along with some of the other problems, which is, quite frankly, one of the biggest elements in your comprehensive plan, is water, water supply, water capacity. And given that, and given the testimony you heard today, water, the big issue that was the fight with Mr. Weaver or with Baron Collier and the Conservancy was use of water. And that is water that does get out of our drinking supply, that water that would be used, and it's a very intensive use of water supply, of which this area does not particularly have a lot, I mean, we pay big water bills, and that's because our water supply is more limited than other areas. Council, I feel it's a policy call whether you either continue it or whether you decide to adopt the ordinance. If you do adopt the ordinance, I would also recommend, close to what Mr. Steinmeier says, is this is a start, looking, this is an ordinance that has been engineered and legally planned. It's not necessarily an ordinance that has gone through a lot of land use review and possibly making modifications in the next year, two years, with all parties involved, of course, dealing with more land use, but I think that there is sufficient land use to make it a good start.
Before I turn this over to Janet for a minute, I want to ask you a couple of questions. The one, the additional clauses you were referring to, or that the Conservancy had referred to, were you in favor of adding those?
Yes. Yes, I would make a few little tweaks of semicolons and ands and little minor things like that, I don't think that counts.
I'm generally against punctuation, but okay.
Okay, but aside from that, I mean, yes, I would just add them as is.
Okay. All right. And Janet, go ahead.
Okay. What I'd like to do is just move this on because I'm not interested in a continuance, and then I just strongly believe, and as this council knows, it's our duty to protect our citizens and our wildlife from the potential contamination risks that are associated with well stimulation, and utmost, it's our responsibility to preserve and protect our public water supplies. So I am in favor of moving this ordinance today with the added recommendations of the Conservancy.
I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second, and, hold on. No, no, you want to add, but, Lori, that's my wife, my wife's Lori, Audrey's not my wife, my attorney. Sometimes I wonder, geez. Based on the testimony, this is based on the testimony, and that you leave room for a composite index, is that what your suggestion was?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Would that be your recommendation as well?
Yes, fine.
Okay? Further discussion?
Further discussion. You know, obviously, those in the room are very passionate about this, and I try to make my decisions on law and science, and regardless of what you think, it is mixed on both sides, we're probably going to end up in problems regardless of how we go today. But the one thing you've all missed... But the one thing you've all missed is a question about energy sustainability. You know, we need to be energy independent. This country needs energy independence. And the question about fracking, oil, whatever you want to question is, does it lead to energy independence? Maybe so, maybe not, I don't know. But what it does not lead to is sustainable energy independence. And that's why I will support the motion that's going forward today. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, thank you very much. And any other discussion? Any other comment?
Just calling.
No? Okay. Why don't we have a roll call?
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Long?
Aye.
Okay, and, okay, go ahead. Okay. I hope you will show up in court for us, too, to do the same thing. No, I'm not, I shouldn't be. And let's understand, let's understand, although as happy as you are, there are some people very concerned about their livelihood, about their property rights, that type of thing. I, I think, although we might disagree, we have to be respectful of that. And, and I genuinely, I genuinely hope that council and our attorney and everybody else in the future, as, as things are pointed out, that we need to change there in order to stay respectful of everybody's rights and everything like that, that we, we look forward to doing those amendments. So, this is just part of the journey here. I'm sure we're going to be reminded, there are some things we did wrong here, and when we do, we'll fix them, okay? Let's take, and I'm sorry for the people who've been waiting so patiently to about, talk about the comments thing, but let's take a 10-minute break and let everybody who doesn't want to listen to this, I just want to get, I want to clear the room so that you have an opportunity, okay? 10 minutes, that's it.